Reporting not.
Okay, are we unmuted? Can people online hear me? Thank you Caitlin. All right. It is six oh one. They call the city council work session of November twelfth to order. Call please.
Councilmember.
Present.
Councilmember Best.
Here.
He is out this week.
Councilmember Thomas here. Councilmember Edwards.
Here.
Mayor Green.
Here.
Councilmember Lila.
Here.
Thank you.
Okay, next we have a rather formidable looking agenda, but so please don't add anything to it. What?
Tim Best is a cat.
Oh. I was like, what's happening on the screen? Uh, if if no one has any changes to the agenda, I would entertain a motion, please.
Headroom is to approve the agenda.
Thomas seconds.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Any opposed? Okay, as I mentioned, this is a formidable looking agenda. What I would like to do is hold each topic. This includes presentation and discussion to twenty minutes, and I'm gonna use a timer to keep us relatively on track because this cannot be a three hour work session. Cool? All right, let's roll. Leadville Main Street. Let's hear from you. Oh, sorry, that's a three minute timer. No.
You can do it in twenty minutes.
Twenty minutes time. Okay.
Well, I'll take that second. I think you might be familiar faces to everybody here, but I'm Baron Duggan. This is Amy Hall. We're Leadville Main Street, and we really appreciate you guys taking the time to hear us and allow us to give.
What's going on?
I think you're good, man.
Okay, no speakers.
We're just appreciative of your time and your consideration and your ongoing support that you've given Leadville Main Street over the past the past years. Kind of want to go through the presentation, so I'm gonna wait till that comes up. We will try to keep things brief because we do, we did also notice that you've got quite a bit going on, so we will be quick. And at the end of our presentation, we're happy to answer any questions, or if you have things along the way, feel free just to cut us off and let us know if you have anything.
Well, that's okay. I could just talk and then I'll just, you know.
Christian has it.
Thank you. We're not in front of us.
Okay, so on the first slide, there's a few things that, you know, that we do. Parades and flowers and music downtown, public art, those types of things. Along with our mission, we felt like those things go hand in hand. We really love to get people downtown. We love people to come enjoy our outside spaces together. We, that's, that's really our, one of our main goals as the Leadville Main Street program. When you guys, when the city chooses to support Leadville Main Street, you can see so many things are affected. And we appreciate everything you guys did for us last year. It really poised us to come into 2024 and have an excellent year, and we are having a great time with our awesome team over here. And we appreciate the support that you guys have given us. Okay. Speaking of our awesome board, they are, lots of them came with us today. We've been really lucky. Amy and I made the transition this year as board members to co-managers back in the beginning of April. So we haven't had a full year quite yet under our belts, but we were super lucky that as our vacant board positions were filled with some great new people. We have a full functioning board. They have their, they show up, they're passionate, they support us, they support the program. We just couldn't be more thrilled with the situation that we're in with our board.
And we had a lot of fun with them too.
This is the, just kind of a general overview of the Main Street program in general. It's a nation, it's a nationwide program, and then each state has their own sort of version of things. These are the main four points that Main Streets tried to touch on, and we really feel like everything that we do kind of touches on all four of these points just sort of organically, but those are the main focuses of Main Street programs in general. This is our twenty-three, twenty-six, twenty-two, twenty-three and twenty-two, six strategic plan. We were so excited as we've been looking at this little last couple of weeks, how many things we've been able to accomplish on this and been able to check some boxes, and we are feeling great about the direction that the program is going. There's a lot of new energy, a lot of new excitement, and we're ready to go into the new year with our team and kind of continue to kind of follow the strategic plan, but it's really fun that we've been able to be so successful the last couple of years and get these things checked off, so that's been great. This is just sort of an overview of what our year looks like, broken down into quarters, just to give you guys an idea of what our calendar looks like throughout the year. Quarter four has been a really, really busy year. We've taken on two new events this year, including the Fourth of July Parade, and then we took on the Parade of Lights last December, so we're coming up on our second time around for that one here in a few weeks. And yeah, we applied for some new grants this year, one that we did get and one that we found out today that we unfortunately did not get. But we are always adding ideas about how to, how to diversify our funding and that's just kind of, we're gonna have more on each of these events on the next few slides. We really feel strongly that all of our community outreach, all of our programming, all of our support, or all of our events really does support and advance the economic vitality of Main Street. We really want to normalize people being in our downtown historic corridor, and we think that the programming that we provide brings all of our community down for different activities and different events, exposes them to our restaurants, our stores, and we're really proud of that. We think that it is a really good program for Leadville. We want everybody living their best life in downtown Leadville. So we're gonna go through just some of our events. Ski drawing is the first one. It's certainly not our event. We would never want to take credit for any, anything ski drawing, however, we do really love just adding a little extra pizzazz to Zites Park during that event, so we put that on there just because we thought that was a really fun thing to have, and lots of people took pictures with it. Community Cleanup Day is a wonderful annual event. We work with community partners on that. And we had a huge turnout this year. It's a lot of families that come out. It's a lot of, it's a lot of thousands of pounds of garbage that gets thrown out, and it's really awesome to see everybody come together and, you know, clean up our outside space together. It's like, it's one of the, my favorite events. It's one of the first events after things turned warm, and it's like everyone comes out of hibernation, and it's so nice to get to see everyone's faces again and work together on a project that's so beneficial to downtown. Go for it. Was, this was likely for our best year for Music in the Park. I think it was like the third year that we did this, this year, and we hosted two events. They were really well attended. We got, we were so lucky. We got to work with local musical acts, including a local youth. We really activated Zites Park, and we just love doing that. Zites Park's like one of our only outside, like downtown spaces that, you know, that's public, and we really love to get people in there and, you know, having a good time. Like, there's people dancing, kids are hula hooping and blowing bubbles. It was a really, it was a really good time. One of the fun things I think about Music in the Park is we get to see lots of friends and lots of familiar faces, and I love as tourists come by, they always hear the music and it draws them in. And we every year get so many comments from folks outside of our, both in our community and outside of our community saying like, this is such a great little town. You guys have such a cute town. This is so fun, and it's always fun to get to hear, like I said, both our locals and our tourists enjoying our little downtown, and we have been being asked for more, more Music in the Park. Leadville and Bloom is a program that we've been working with the city on for a long time. The flowers were, I think, extra beautiful this year. They really just make downtown such a welcoming environment. We had a little bit of heartache when they got vandalized, but man, we saw the community come out, not only with words of support, but action and texts and offers for help, but people coming out and actively helping us pick up these poor little dead flowers and replant them, and it really showed us how much people care, the store owners care, the community cares about the flowers. It's a really fun way too for store owners to promote their business with the little cards in front and for families to shout out family members that they care about. And we had one man write us a really sweet note about how he always puts his grandkids, and then they go sit on the corner after they get ice cream and eat ice cream by their flower box, so it's just a sweet little program. And one last positive note, when we did get, we composted all of the flowers this year. We worked with C4 and they were awesome, and they recycled the dirt, so that, that was good. That was a good, little bit of progress this year. The Fourth of July Parade was a new one for us this year. It was kind of a surprise, and we just went for it. We felt like it was a really good fit for Main Street, and, you know, it was, it was a big event. We had a lot of people downtown. We think it went really well, and we're really looking forward to future years of that and how, you know, how we can improve our organization on that and our preparation. Trigger Treat Street was also a big success this year. We worked with our wonderful partner, Lake County Recreation, and this was, I think, our fourth year working with them on that. We had about, well, we were expecting about eight hundred to a thousand kids, and I think we were right in that range. Tons of families. We couldn't have asked for better, better weather.
It's beautiful.
We also had a huge pumpkin. I don't know if you guys noticed. But we had like hundreds of people taking photos in front of the huge pumpkin, and it was really, it was really fun. We still haven't named it, so we just, you know, putting that out there, but. You have suggestions. We had, well, we had over seventy businesses and, and individuals sign up to give out candy, which was amazing. And then we about ran out of tables because we had set up enough tables for everyone, and more, more community came out to give out candy. And so, once again, just getting people downtown, exposing them to our downtown, seeing friends, seeing, I mean, family, and it was such an awesome event. The Dance Collective was out there doing their flash mobs, which was so, so fun. Crystal also looked amazing. So it was, it turned out really, really great, and we got lots of good feedback from a lot of our store owners, saying people popping in, people saying, oh, I haven't been in in a while. I didn't realize you had this anymore. This was a great opportunity to come down and, and see what you've got and exploring a little bit more downtown. These are gonna be our last events coming up for the end of the year. We have Shop Small Saturday coming up on November thirtieth. This was an event that years ago was hosted, I think, by The Chamber, and then, you know, it, it was not going to exist anymore, and so Main Street took it on a few years ago. And we are looking forward to kind of working with some community partners again on that event. We've got Visit Leadville and The Chamber coming back, and that's one of the greatest events, in my opinion, for this, for the businesses right downtown. You know, we get people out, people will have a fun raffle prize. It gets a lot of people out, and people get super into it. The Parade of Lights is obviously the best parade. I'm, you know, I'm just kidding, but not really. It's, I mean, this is our second year, and we're adding more to it this year. We're gonna work with another community partner, and we're gonna try to add some really fun things this year and try to grow it. Last year was amazing. It was like an amazing turnout, and so we're just really looking forward to having that one under our, under our feet a little bit, moving forward and, and continuing to add to it. One thing we didn't put on here was our annual auction, and that's my bad. I just, it's not a community event. It's our fundraising event, but it was like a really good time.
How much money did you raise this year?
We, in the ballpark of about eighty-five hundred, which was really incredible. I think it was our smallest audience this, that we had this year of all the years, but it was a great crowd, and we had the addition of the, the Under the Stage Bar, which we called the Rabbit Hole, and it was just really fun. It was, it was different, and yeah. A small crowd, but a very generous crowd. We were so grateful for everyone who came out, and it was, it was a hoot. It was.
It's always a great event. I think you should add in your auction next year, naming rights for the pumpkin. You should.
Pumpkin.
Oh, that changes.
That's a good idea because it's really right before our home lead.
Same.
Good idea.
Thank you. But the fact that you, you do that to add to the money you have, and the fact that you've taken on so many of the events that our community relies on and wouldn't have happened without you. Just thank you.
Thank you. We appreciate that. We did also, we didn't really say much about this, but this is our first year participating in Colorado Gives, as well as Erin touched on earlier. We are trying to diversify our funding. We were really bummed to find out that we did not get the grant that we had been really hopeful for today, but we are learning. We're learning to grant, right? And we're leaning into things like Colorado Gives and trying to find other avenues to bring in for money. We don't have to spend a lot of time on this. These are just some of our community partners and. That's one thing we've kind of done this last several months, and I mean, over the years, but also this last several months. It's, it's so much fun when we get to work with, whether it's Direct Department or C4 or, you know, whoever it may be. The events, it just, you've got more manpower, and I think that it gives a real sense that the community is coming together and is working together, and it feels like such a huge compliment when our community partners come to us and say, hey, like, like with the Parade of Lights. Parade of Lights is really, really fun. Could we do that with you? Because we want to be part of it, and that's, that's a fun thing.
What is the date of the Parade of Lights this year?
It is December sixth at six o'clock.
Maybe back to Taste of Leadville.
Yes. Yeah, it is a big night in Leadville. Yeah, with Taste of Leadville. Okay, so the really exciting part is. Just don't look really small, but you know.
Fine print. You brought us to the fine print.
It's very fine. Erin was calling it the meat and potatoes. Meat and potatoes of our presentation. We are requesting the sixty-five thousand dollars that the city granted last year. We didn't want to ask for anything more. We've laid out our budget based on that and our fundraising capabilities. We felt like with adding the extra events that we have added in this past year, we can still budget within that, within that frame. And we're gonna, and we're continuing all the time to try to figure out more diversified funding, so we hope to get better at that, but that is our request for this coming year, and we are happy to answer any question. Our accountant did suggest that we point out that you are now getting two managers for the price of one, and then that's a pretty good deal. So, from Erin's accounting, there you go. You've got that little, little burst in there as well.
Council, you have four minutes.
Yeah. Can I ask a question real quick? First, so we, we did talk a lot about watering. I've spent, and you guys have spent more time worrying about watering than we ever had, and it worked great. So this is for the Leadville and Bloom, which I think is a huge, well, you do lots of fantastic things, but it's a really good thing. Will the plan work that we had last year for dividing up the labor? Because part of it is we gave Leadville Main Street additional ten thousand dollars last year, and we said, you know, can you please figure out the watering? And we worked out a situation. Do you think that will work again this year? As far as dividing up the labor between Main Street volunteers and the city?
I think so. Yeah, I think it worked really, really well, and we have some more thoughts for getting more volunteers involved because it is a big project, but the city was very, very generous last year, and with not only the money, but with Orlando's awesome help, and I think it was great. I don't know, you know, for sure. Well, I'll just, I was gonna say, you know, I don't know what Orlando's gonna be doing next year and all that, but yes. The Street Department was great to work with. They were awesome. They, we worked really well with them last year, and it did work. It worked really well. We felt good about it. So yes, we're still talking about exactly how it's gonna work out, but something similar would be ideal.
And we can, we can budget, I think, the same amount of time for Orlando. I just didn't want that task to fall completely back on the city.
Totally. Yeah, no.
Great. I yield my time to the council.
Questions?
I've got one. I really appreciate the economic impact that the Main Street program has on our downtown corridor. Have you been able to quantify that in any way, like using a placer AI program?
We have not. We have chatted with Katie a little bit about how we can start doing that because it's not something we've done. So it's a little, it's kind of new to us, and so I, we were, I think we had, we didn't realize we needed to be a little bit more proactive with Trigger Treat Street because we could have probably got like something pretty cool from that. So I think going forward, we will work with them and. Take advantage of that technology.
I think it'd be really interesting.
Yeah, I think so too.
Okay. Other questions?
Does the sixty-five thousand ask, is that, is any part of that grant funded, or is that just a line item out of our general fund?
Just a line item out of our general fund. Any money that they're able to fundraise or get grants for would be in addition. We, we don't have any grants that come to us that we use for Main Street.
Other questions? Thank you so much. I really appreciate it. Yeah. We appreciate you guys. Thank you so much for your time. Thanks. Good night.
Amy, I'm around the rest of the, the week if you want to get speakers.
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, let's move on. Let me reset my timer. Well done. Thirty-eight seconds shy. Um, let's move on to Animal Shelter. Caitlin.
Good evening, everyone. All right. I don't know. Oh, thanks, Sarah. All right, so on the next slide here, you will see our mission, so that is the same as my last presentation. We're focusing on that humane treatment of animals and people in the community through advocacy, community outreach, education, and adoption services. And then next, we have just a reminder slide of some of the things that we do here. So we provide care for the strays, surrenders, adoptable pets, and other local pets that may be on hold. We help the community find and locate their missing pets. We also match people with pets, so we're not just simply saying, apply, and here you get this animal, you can take it. We're really making sure that animal matches their current lifestyle and their home environment, and then we have resources for locals in need. So I worked on just some statistics before we go over the budget. So from January first to October thirty-first, we have some information here. Some of the language is gonna be a little different because I did use the PACPA classifications from my spreadsheet, so I'm happy to answer any questions, but we've had a total of a hundred and thirty-eight strays come in. Fifty-two of those were from the city, eighty-six were from the county. We had forty-seven surrenders come in, eighteen from the city and twenty-nine from the county. We had two transfers, so those were two dogs that were taken to Ark Valley, but were actually from Twin Lakes, so they were brought back to Lake County, and then twenty-eight others, so like seven kittens born in care, bike quarantines, those sort of things. From the strays that were brought in, about sixty-five percent of those came from private citizens, about twenty percent from the police department, eleven percent from the sheriff's office, and about six percent from the staff seeing animals on our way into work or assisting with a pickup. Outcomes, we've had adoptions. We've had successful return to owners, which are great. Twenty-four animals have been transferred out from January first to October thirty-first, and then forty-eight unclaimed strays. Eighteen of those were from the city, thirty were from the county. The city numbers for unclaimed strays, we had lots of cats and kittens that were unclaimed, only one dog. And then from the county, it was divided, probably about a third or a little more were dogs. The rest were cats. And then on the next slide here, I do a side-by-side comparison. I have additional slides that kind of break it down a little better, but these are the main line items that we focused on with the animal shelter. There are some, of course, like healthcare and FICA that are gonna change based on the salary and employment, but not necessarily because I'm in there in, in putting what changes need to happen for those line items. So the biggest one's gonna be salary and the building maintenance decrease. We had ten thousand dollars set aside for the fences for this year, which are up and we're getting sponsorships for, so that took that ten thousand dollars off there. And then on the next slide. Okay, so we have salary has increased, supplies has increased, vehicle repairs has decreased, as we will have a vehicle through. I'm blanking on the name. Sorry, Lori. Yes, and then building maintenance decrease, as I mentioned, education and conference and increase since we'll need training and certification for animal control, a very slight travel increase, uniform allowance decrease as we're pretty set on our uniforms. We just need some funds here and there when we have to purchase new shirts or hoodies that may get holes in them, and then a slight increase in our animal expenses. So on the next slide, it breaks those down. So the salary increase is a little under forty-four thousand dollars. That's across seven staff members. The majority of our full-time staff members were not allotted to work up to forty hours, so based on their time sheets and the history of seeing that they are actually working more hours, and we need forty hours to get the job done, we have all but one of our full-time employees will now be up to forty hours, and their wage increase was just based off the standard cost of living and merit base. Then next is gonna be our supplies. We're just seeing and purchasing our supplies, so like our disinfectant, the vaccines, those core supplies that we have to have to function as a shelter. Those costs are continuing to increase, so we've increased that supply line item. Same with animal expenses. We're really looking forward to having some new vet partnerships, so we won't be driving or sending staff to Denver for fourteen-hour days with a truckload of kittens. So we do hope that that will also help with our animal expenses. Education and conference, just a little over a thousand dollars for an increase, so we can finally afford the national or the statewide Colorado Conference and then have some money in there for the animal control training that we will need for that staff member. And then travel is now six hundred, and it was like five eighty-two, so just a slight increase there. Next slide, please, Sarah. Thanks. So thank you all for your time, consideration, and support, and I'm happy to answer any questions. I was trying to keep it simple and sweet.
Also, questions for Caitlin?
Caitlin, the animal control officer training that we're doing, is that gonna be for the same officer that we paid to train this last year?
Well, we didn't have any paid training this last year, but Lori and I did discuss with Hillary, so we will be publicly posting that position to have candidates apply. The current training that we had this year was all free through online courses that I found, and then there'll be like a pretty hefty national course. That's two certification levels that they'll be taking.
But using a new, a, a new employee to do that, not, not a current employee for that certification.
We.
Potentially.
So we are going to post the position internally and externally, just on the advice of our attorney, but our internal candidate, as well as other external candidates, can apply for that position. So the only thing I'm thinking, Ms. Caso, can you correct me if I'm wrong? I think we paid for a test, but with, the training was all online.
Right.
And so that was.
But it was an unsuccessful effort, so we will do that again this year after we post the position up.
I, well, we can talk more about that offline, but we're, the plan is to continue the training and retest if that's possible.
Yeah, I had asked that last meeting, so I was trying to clarify. Thank you. Caitlin, one more question. Looks like based on your numbers, your cost per animal is about fifteen hundred dollars. It looks like nationally, the cost per animal is about a thousand dollars or a little bit less than that. Can you tell us why? I understand we're in a small rural mountain community, but why such a premium on the cost per animal for our care? Do you have anything in point there?
Are you getting those numbers based off the total budget divided by the animal?
Yes.
Okay. Um, well, for our animal expenses, you know, specifically, we only have about nineteen thousand six hundred this year, which broke down to about sixty-three dollars per animal. So I understand our budget as a whole divided by animal maybe more, but when we are only allotted, you know, twenty thousand dollars per animal, that's on a much smaller scale.
I think that's a simple economy question to, like, just thinking about it from a city's perspective. Hiring one person to manage, uh, even if it's a smaller community is going to cost you a similar amount to hire anyone. So scales of economy, it just makes sense that for bigger cities, the numbers can be much lower than for smaller communities such as ourself. It makes economical sense to me that we would be about that, but it's certainly something to look into.
The one thing I've talked about a lot is the cost of transporting and the cost of vet care for animals. And we talked about that a lot. So from an economic development perspective, hundred and ten percent, we need another vet, more options. We talked with Dr. Linnamire about this. It's not a competition for his business, but it's a supplement to that. So that when we need that vet care, we're not having to transport the animals to Summit and eat in Denver, which is just prohibitively, so.
Right.
You're looking at cost of, uh, stat time, you're looking at cost of the vet care. And then on top of that, your wear and tear and everything on our vehicle is just, if we, if we could take that one expense and have the vet care provided here, it would be a lot less expensive per animal. And there's certain, you know, and, and Ms. Cusco can explain this a little more than I can, but there are certain things that we, we have to provide certain vet care, so it's not an, an option. Once an animal comes into our care, there are certain things that we have to provide. And so if there's not vet care available in our community, we end up transporting a animal.
Yep.
So a hundred percent, I think we need.
It, it just stands out, that's all.
Oh, yeah. I agree with you.
Caitlin, can you talk a little bit more about the budget for salary? Cause that's gone up quite a lot, forty five thousand. And I see that in twenty twenty four, we bed budgeted just over two hundred and eighty six thousand. So was all of that salary money spent or did we exceed that with overtime? I just wonder what expenditures actually were for twenty twenty four.
Yeah, I can pull up that document in my Google Drive. It might just take me a moment. Um. I have crystals here today.
Wow. Well, she's, I'll, I'll explain some approaches we had to the animal shelter budget. First of all, it's very, very hard for us to hire on a part-time basis. And so what we've tried to do is hire on a more full-time basis so we can offer the benefits. So the carrying cost of that is higher, but it reduces a lot of the attrition. So the number one thing that I've talked about for the animal shelter is that, you know, we're competing in a labor pool of folks who might work in the other types of the service industry. So it's restaurant or hospitality. And animal shelter is kind of a harder position. So we've, we've tried to up the salary to be competitive with what are the other service pool in Leadville is offering. We also are trying to make the positions, if we can, make them um, so that we can offer benefits, which again costs a little bit more, but for us, I think it's paid off. We've had uh, some employees who've stuck with us through a lot of difficult animal situations. And so I think over time, that has uh, increased the cost. And I think this year in particular, you're seeing that the full-time employees, um, I don't know where this rule came from, but we're told in prior administrations that they couldn't work more than six, thirty six hours a week. Uh, I'm sorry, thirty six hours. And so that was causing a lot of scheduling issues and I'm not really sure where that came from. And we're now going to say, look, if you're a full-time employee, Caitlin can schedule you up to forty hours.
Yeah, that makes sense.
So we're budgeting for that. It, 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 it may not happen that, you know, some of our employees have other jobs, sometimes they're in school. So, but we're going to budget for hoping that we can have them for forty hours.
So I think if I've followed all of what you said, we won't have any part-time employees. Everybody will be full-time, but you're not adding any additional employees.
You're the exception of one.
Yeah, I heard one was going to be part-time.
One part-time.
And in part, that is sometimes our employees' choices rather than ours. Because we do get a lot of folks who are at CNC, who are in school here, and they would love to work the animal shelter, but they can only offer us part-time hours.
Sure.
And so sometimes we'll take someone who is saying, I will work for you part-time, I don't want the benefits. We'd rather say, look, if that is attractive to someone, I've been in a full-time job with benefits, that's available as well.
Caitlin, did you find the, this year's salary expenditures?
Um, I did find it, but my Google Drive, the formula is not equating because it references another document. So I'm looking for the original in my email from Crystal.
Maybe this is uh, more, could be answered more off the top of your head, but um, if you have the people who are full-time budgeting them now to actually work forty hours a week, what um, you know, were they all previously working thirty six? I mean, does that? I guess how many are being made up here by this increase?
Historically, um, I was given, like, I started at thirty two hours and then had sixty four hours, I think, to split amongst staff member how I could plug people in. Um, with, you know, the safety concerns and then having an appropriate number of staff members there. Everybody's been, you either have to stay under twenty eight so that you're not going into full-time or you're max budgeted at thirty six hours. So by going to forty hours, that's allowing four additional hours for those four other, five other staff members who can then use those um, supplemental for when we have um, office needs. Since we do potentially have an internal person going into an animal control position, that then leaves a need for um, an office administrator. So someone that would be the front desk greeting people, helping with those adoptions. So those forty hours, those people will be plugged into that office position.
I see. Thank you.
So Rebecca, you wanted the, the year to date? Is that what we were looking for?
Yeah.
Okay.
For two options.
Thank you. Two hundred thousand nine, nine fourteen.
So about like eighty six left, eighty six.
Covered the last two months. Okay, so that'll be under budget.
Yeah.
Under budget.
Where do we have any information on the IGA between the city and the county for the animal shelter?
Commissioner Fiedler has forwarded me a list of things that they would like to see the IGA deal with. Um, and so now we try to national together, but that came out of a BOCC meeting that they identified some, some features that were important to the county.
Is that, so is that still potentially a shift in the funding from the presentation today? Or is that like a next year conversation at this point?
So does any of the funding for the animal shelter come from the county at this point, or is this all on the city?
Fifty percent comes from the county for the current IGA.
Fifty percent of this budget, so this isn't fifty percent of the budget, this is a percent of the budget, but half of it should come from the county.
Correct. And then if we looked at the revenue numbers, you'll see um, the offset.
Timberman, I said.
Right.
Fifty percent. Thank you for, for zooming in. Can you maybe shed some light on this question?
Sure. Thank you, Madam Mayor, uh, members of council. Um, the county's notice of intent to terminate is still effective, uh, one, one twenty five. So until the IGA is redone, um, you know, the county is, the, the county has sent that notice to terminate, which the biggest part, of course, is the funding aspect. So I would uh, ask council to prioritize the request for the IGA um, for these funding matters. And I know, Madam Mayor, you had uh, it sent us the invite for this meeting earlier. That's why none of the commissioners are here because we didn't receive the budget proposal until about an hour and a half ago. So that's why none of the commissioners are here.
And so just to get this straight, you all are threatening to pull out unless the IJ signed. Is that right?
Uh, it's not a threat, sir. Um, it was um, a letter sent this spring on the intent to terminate the IGA based on things that the county would want to see in that, which we discussed at the large uh, city council work session, I don't know, held two, maybe three months ago. Um, but we haven't seen any movement um, on IGA renegotiations.
I, I mean, you know, the, there was a plan for that and it was that Jeff Fiedler and um, the mayor meet. And that was agreed upon on that same meeting. And then it's my understanding that that never happened. So it's kind of odd that that's uh, the angle there. But um, nevertheless, I, I guess it would be nice to have had that information ahead of time. Um, but I, I mean, you could say it's not a threat, but I don't know how else you describe saying that you're going to terminate the IGA if it's not met in accordance to uh, the things that you are presenting to us without us at the table to have those conversations to begin with.
Uh, with all due respect, city council has had this information for many months now.
Mayor, when did you get the document from Commissioner Fiedler?
Is it something that's been shared with council or? Okay.
No.
I, I hadn't seen it. That was the reason for the question.
Um, let me see. Sorry, I'm making it through my email. In the end of October, so two weeks ago.
Couple of weeks ago.
Is the goal to complete negotiations on the IGA then within the next?
I expressed to. Now, so I figured this one would go over. Hang on.
Uh-oh.
I'm just gonna.
Set that conversation for the end of year one.
I'm gonna set a stopwatch so I can sort it, kind of see how much time we're using. Um, you know, I, I have mentioned to Jeff, uh, Fiedler as far back as September that it is unlikely that a completed IGA could be done by the end of the year, given the other projects, um, pressing projects like budget that we are working on. Um, he sent me this, uh, the list that came out of the BOCC meeting. And we both agreed to get together and start working on the IGA. Um, since that time, the transportation planning region priority list has come up, and that is the only thing that we have worked on together since that time.
So we've never really sat at the table and had this conversation about an IGA. Um, at least past that initial meeting that we had at city council, uh, where they were invited to guess. Is that right?
The work session.
Right. So, yeah, I guess make that what you will.
Other questions or comments? Let me get, make sure council's all done. Steve, could you come up so that the owl can see you first?
Restricting my comments just to something that's fiscal. Um, I would like to see, uh, likely in the future, um, part of the budget should be for insurance for the volunteers because now the volunteers are required to sign a waiver if they're injured. And to me, that does not seem reasonable. Thank you.
Thank you, Steve. All right.
Just thinking about meetings that are related um, to the IGA. I, I re, uh, I'm here because I feel like I've become disconnected with the progress and I thought I'd missed some things, but it sounds like I really haven't missed too much uh, progress. But I, I do recall at least one meeting where I was in attendance with yourself and Lori. And Caitlin there with, with Jeff. So and I don't know if there's been any other one-on-one conversations, but just to add that into the mix here that I believe that there has been more than just the work session.
Do you want um, sheriff to submit? Because it seems like at our last conversation that this should really be two IGAs.
Right.
Animal shelter, you know, animal control separately. We've been focusing on the animal shelter since that time. Would you like, you know, in the same vein that the county commissioners have said, here are some things that we feel belong in our IGA. Um, I'd be interested in receiving, um, you know, your input with it along the spirit of a separate uh, animal control IGA.
Yeah, absolutely.
That'd be great.
And just an update from the, the sheriff's end. I understood you posted your position for an animal control officer.
If you.
At interviews, i- is it correct that you hired someone for that position?
Yes.
Okay. And that person's already started?
Yes, correct.
Okay, so I think that actually gets us a little further along. I think if we, because I think one of the ideas was in the, the conversation that you had um, with us upstairs happened before the work session with the um, county commissioner. So you haven't missed anything since then. Uh, so I would say, you know, that agreement was to come up with two different IGAs. And uh, you know, I think we, we can certainly make progress on animal control. You know, now that you've got yours fleshed out, we have some ideas on our end.
Yeah.
Because I think there were a lot of things we agreed upon. I think it's just a matter of who does what and when and what kind of the coverage looks like. And we had a new chief though. So, he's a good guy.
Just as an aside, is your new animal control officer, you've already hired that position? That's correct. Curly or are you going to go through certification?
They're going, they're going to go through the certifications process, yeah.
Thanks.
Um, so she's in training right now.
I mean, great. A little bit off the topic, but it would be interesting to know or, or to align whatever training program that, that you guys have chosen with like what, what our shelter has also chosen.
That would be a true certification, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Great. Okay. I will reach out to you, sir.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Questions? Further questions, comments?
Last question, um, please, uh, Caitlin. A lot of the food uh, and animal, well, the, the pet food and things are come from nonprofits here. Where in your budget does that show? Uh, food that's donated to the animal shelter, what line item is that?
Um, I currently don't have that as a line item for the donated food that comes in due to, you know, the price, the quantity changing and those sort of things. But I could get with Crystal to add that to specifically show.
It'd be interesting to know how that, like, wha- what kind of number that is. Um, how much food do we actually provide for the two or three hundred animals that we touch every year? I mean, just, it would be an interesting thing to round out.
Yeah, in worst case scenario.
What's the cost of it? We didn't have that.
Exactly.
Right.
Oh, I'm sure, but I.
I do have.
Number is, so it would be nice to have an idea.
Yeah.
I do have some of those numbers from last year. Um, so I'll definitely look again for my end of year presentation and can reflect last year's food expenses versus this year.
That'd be great.
And she, uh, she did present that information last year and I just wanted to say, uh, I, you can correct me if I'm wrong, but I, I, it is not a nonprofit. It's our pet food store in town.
Yes.
And so I'd just like to say they do a grateful pause because they, they're, they're the ones who have been donating a lot of food.
Uh, I thought both of the pet stores and Pet Hood, all three donated food, do they not? Is it just Grateful Paws?
Yes, it's just Grateful Paws that's donating the food for us. I do believe Jill is on the meeting, um, so I can let her speak to that more if she chooses to. But um, my understanding is she made a partnership with the company that she would carry their product and it's a great product. And then they would give two free bags of food to the shelter for the cats and the dogs. And then, you know, the cases of wet food, which if we're full, lasts us maybe a little over a week.
Yeah, no, it would be interesting to know what the food budget is potentially.
Oh, we have a hand up?
Yeah.
Hi, guys. If you can hear me, it's Jill from Grateful Paws. Um, just to give you some rough numbers, um, and not the financial side, but we donate um, two twenty seven pound bags of food, of dog food. So that's fifty four pounds of dog food, um, twenty four cans of dog food every month. We also donate forty cans of cat food and twenty pounds of cat food each month. Um, Caitlin is correct, is this is a partnership that I've worked out with Pets Global um, to have a high quality of food in the shelter. So this is not solely Grateful Paws donation, it's also from Pets Global as well. And I do believe they should be recognized for that. Um, in addition, every cat and dog that is adopted from the shelter then can come into Grateful Paws and get a free four pound bag of food, cat or dog food. Um, in addition, get ten percent off of um, any other purchases they make. And the purpose of this. And the purpose of this is not so they necessarily have to keep the cat or dog on this food. But so they can properly transition the cat or dog to the a new food that of their choice. To help with digestive issues that may arise from the adoption and just change of scenery and things like that. In addition to, if you talk with many shelters, staying on one consistent food. Actually decreases the cost of vet bills. Because they're not having all of these changes from different donations of different entities and things like that. As much as our community needs them. Um we, the for the shelter animals themselves, we try to keep it consistent for health reasons. And I'm happy to answer any other questions as well.
Uh that helped a lot. Thanks, Jill.
Thanks, Jill. Alright, we are nearly ten minutes over. If anyone has any other comments, please make them at this time.
Sorry, I'm gonna go over a touch more here.
Okay, go ahead.
Um and I'm just recalling back to the initial conversation of why the why the county submitted the the letter. Um it it was because we don't have a say in the budget, and so the. Uh you know, understanding what's going on in more detail instead of just uh having having a bill handed over to us was the the main purpose of that. And so that would be appreciated is that we have had that opportunity to dive into it, to have that opportunity to say, you know, what does this mean, what is this, why are we doing that? And then we can come to the table and have those discussions. I think that's the big reason, as Tim said, that the budget is the big reason of why we need to. We need to negotiate the I G A.
And I am, you know, I'm very sorry, the budget came to all of us at an extremely late. Period of time, so none of us had had an opportunity to really go over it thoroughly. Um this is not a set budget either, this is. This is just the beginning, so do you think um? Tim, do you think, Tim Bergman, do you think, you know, now that the budget is in all of our hot little hands? Um that. A meeting with interested parties to go over it would be helpful at a soon date.
Yes, I think that would be very, very welcomed and uh very helpful for all of us.
Great. Uh I will set that time.
Mayor, real briefly, um I've been very violently ill, so it's why, part of the reason why I'm here, but I do apologize. For having this turned in later today. Um and I do know briefly we had discussed having a board, kind of like. The fire department has, who would get together to discuss the budget, so. I know that was mentioned as well, so the city would have a representative and the county would have a representative.
Thank you. And then finally, uh Ms. Caravell, I think you have your hand up as well.
Yeah, hi, um I just wanna say um. I'm the office administrator there for the shelter, and I just want to invite everybody to go and just visit us, get to know what we do there. On a daily basis, um get our program. I know Steve was in our program, so appreciate him going by and volunteering. Um just to say, you know, it's a very different, um kind of when you put it on numbers and on paper. Than when you actually see in progress what's done. Um so we do have volunteer program, everybody's welcome to apply and always kind of just show up or give us a call and I'll schedule you in to. Do an orientation and show you around and see everything that, you know, with the pets go through and the people. Um kind of all our in-going and and outgoing traffic, um it kind of. Shifts your mindset a little bit about what's done, if you actually put your shoes, you know, you walk in those shoes a little bit. You don't have to do it all day, um just kind of, you know, just go around, look at the shelter. I know a lot of you have gone, but you know, whenever you wanna go, just give us a call, we're there.
Thank you, Brenda.
Thank you.
Okay. I'm gonna stop our over, our overage timer of twelve minutes and forty-six seconds. And cut yours in half, no. Let me restart it for twenty minutes.
His presentation is three words, managing board.
Chief Daley, please take it away.
Uh sir, can you go to slide number nine, please, online? It will be, it should say updates on it. Um I did include this right here, that now right there, thank you very much. I did include um that first portion in the presentation, that's all of our um. Our ethics and our values and our mission and all of that, so if you get an opportunity, if you have not read that for our agency, please um take a look at that. Um that's what we pride ourselves on for our community, so I wanna be able to add that in there. Uh I'll just, I gave this presentation to the Board of County Commissioners this morning and also to the management board, so hopefully I can get it within that timeframe here. Even though I'm sometimes a little winded, uh short short-term objectives here. We talked about adding an additional tactical tender or type three to our fleet because they're about twenty-four months out. So if we start talking about doing that now, we won't have the expense of it for a couple of years. But we want to be able to put that in our queue for the future. And that benefits a a whole lot of other things, you know, obviously response capabilities, but uh the wildland program as well. Uh replacement of command one, command two, we're talking about the enterprise fleet. Uh I have talked to Rory and we may just go with one of those vehicles this year instead of two, because we still have to sharpen our pencils a lot, I think, on this. Overall budget. Um so it may just go for one of those and it'll probably be for our operations chief on command two on that. Uh we wanna retain the firefighters that were on the safer grant, that's staffing out a good fire emergency response, that's the salaries and benefits that were paid for for three years. And now we need to just keep those people um because of obviously the growth that we've uh. Um have had here in Lake County. And then my biggest ask this year is gonna be for retention and salary adjustments. There will be some percentage increases that, you know, across the board that everybody gets, but I'm also asking for adjustments. Uh based on salary analysis, et cetera, for the retention of the people that we've already invested in. Uh you know, we have people that have worked for us, especially our captains from anywhere from ten years, six years to ten years. And to lose that kind of uh um experience and that that veteran. Aspect of our agency would be detrimental, so um you'll see that as we move for further on here. Um and then this, and then we have, um we wanna obviously do our standard operating procedures. We've done the policy portion of it, but we're working on the procedures next. And then a solar grant for station two, because those utility costs are out of control and obviously we wanna be mindful for the environment. The long-term objectives, I'll just sum these up, one through four is basically working on mitigation efforts for Lake County. And continue to work with the partners that are out there, that are doing a great job right now, working on and chipping away at the uh. Um C W P P. And that's the Community Wildfire Protection Plan. And then uh and then number five is building a hose tower. Uh and that's for greater communications, that was the original plans on that station down there, because the cash was gonna have. Uh and that's coming online, the tower up there for better radio communications. It was gonna ping off of that one to give us better coverage in the south. So I still wanna do that for long-range planning and then um build out a climate-controlled building out of the Edlars Training Center. This will obviously uh give us better things for um our partnership with the college and moving forward with the educational benefits. And then uh and then and then, you know, we keep talking about hiring that additional engineer every year. And um hopefully I get an opportunity to talk to you about an opportunity that we have. For an engineer position, um if we move forward with that here pretty soon. Next slide, please. So these are the budget needs and these are the ones from twenty twenty-four, and those are pretty much complete. Um so please take a look at those when you have an opportunity. Uh we we really did a lot of good this year to include the hundred thousand that we set aside, the two hundred thousand we set aside, we spent a hundred thousand on that ladder truck that Greater Eagle got us. And Brian Brown is here, the consultant, um we actually went out and operated that truck, and he was amazed. On on uh the price range that we got that truck for, so that means it was good to hear from him as well. Uh next slide, please. So this is the ask um of the year, and and uh you'll see that uh later on, I'll discuss uh the actual reduction that I did in the budget of. Two hundred and forty-three thousand. In order to try to offset uh at least the three personnel of two hundred and fifty-five thousand that we need to bring on and keep. So I was able to offset pretty much that cost um in the operational budget, but. There is still obviously uh uh an addition due to, you know, the adjustments that that's required now. Um as you see there from captain at the captain grade here, captain grade one, now these are all at captain grade one level, so it's the highest level. And I probably still work with um Crystal to bring down the overall cost, because a lot of people aren't at the grade one currently right now, so I'll try to reject. You know, um when they will become those grades and then um soften that um that overall here pretty soon. Um and maybe push it out like first quarter, second quarter, maybe even third quarter on those grades. Uh but this is the negotiation on what the union is talking to the mayor and Lori about, those are the um. And the first line item here is what they currently make. Now, if you see here in bold, this is with F L S A, so this is the required. Uh timeframe that um that they work on top of just like a regular schedule. They have, uh they work ninety-six hours, ninety-six hours, and then a hundred and forty-four, so there's thirty-eight hours of overtime that's rolled into their salary. Range here, so that captures all of that to include um their qualifications. Um and so this would be the new, the new line there. As you can see here, this is the amount that was reduced in the budget of two hundred and forty-three thousand three sixty-five. Uh this was the original without the reduction, that four hundred and eighteen thousand. Um and you can see there um before the reduction, but this is the actual ask here, just in. Now, this is just the adjustment and some uh increases for the city and the county there. Now, of course, there's greater impactful um. Line items that increase because of this, and um I'll get into those numbers here in a little bit. Next slide, please. This was the overall, and this just kind of breaks it out right here with all of the fringe benefits, um retirement, et cetera, and that was the total amount. To be able to keep the uh safer personnel, and that's three at two fifty-five. Next slide, please. So these are the, these are the reductions in the in the overall budget that that I did, um. We're, we wanna reduce the the fire bonus. The safer will no longer be in there, and you can see that has seven and five thousand, vehicle repairs forty to thirty, because we replaced a lot of our vehicles. And um that maintenance, other than the purists, which you'll hear me on uh next Tuesday, um come in at like thirty-eight thousand, other than that vehicle. Um all of our vehicles are either under warranty or they have little maintenance right now, so I I felt comfortable about uh reducing that amount. The vehicle lease payment, the type three engine, that's that seventy-two thousand eight sixty-five, instead of putting in the operational budget. Pay for that out of the fire fund balance, so it's not a a cost to the city and the county in in the in the split. Uh gas and oil, C M C no longer pays for. Um the fuel, or we don't, we no longer pay for the fuel during um fire academies, they've taken on that expense, so I felt comfortable. Um bringing that cost down as well. So building repairs, we, instead of doing the sheet rock at the station this last year, we remodeled the bathroom, it was just stalls, and we put two actual. Uh bathrooms within the bathroom itself to become unisex, we hired a female, we're getting a lot more females in our program. And I felt that that was very appropriate to do, so that everybody feels a lot more comfortable over there, so we did that. Um this last year's budget, but I still need to do the sheet rock, so but I did reduce it um. From twenty thousand to ten thousand. Legal services, I just did here over.
We did try and talk about reducing that, but but that is, it is a pipe leak that happened, and it's basically just, there's a hole in the sheet box, so it.
There's. It's, yeah, it's all exposed in the bed. So there's, um and I'd rather just make compartments so that um, you know, access panels, instead of sheet rocking that back up. But some sheet rock will need to be done and then have access panels to those pipes. It's an old building. Just in case we needed to go through that again, we can just. And we know it can happen, so uh and then we have uh legal services, I just took um. Uh the kind of like three-year average, this one here was a big cut, we were putting two hundred thousand away. And we decided to reduce that uh a hundred thousand for this year, and this might be a discussion within the management board. To try to even reduce that even more based on wildland deployments and what we're actually bringing in. Um for that revenue for capital replacement.
But will that accommodate the new truck that you're trying to get into years? Will that get you toward that goal?
It will, that this is supposed to, to include that while then.
Okay.
Fifteen sets on a grant. Uh so we decided to reduce that, just have two sets a year for replacement. Hazmat, we we budgeted five thousand for a trailer this last year. And we received the trailer, started to do that again, uh medical equipment, I did average. Minor equipment, we were able to get a lot of equipment with the uh apparatus that we have purchased over the years, so I feel pretty comfortable with that as well. Uh next slide, please. Hose, we we um sold some hose to C uh Climax Mine and uh. They gave us five thousand dollars towards replacement of hose, and also we've been able to get some from uh the replacement of the vehicle, so I felt good about that. Office equipment. And and then uh cleaning fee, that's kind of a fluff, that kind of um, it's the only one in the budget, trust me, it's the only one. Next slide, please. This is the fire fund balance, you can see at the top right here, um as of the audited balance of twenty twenty-three was at six hundred and sixty-one thousand. And then after revenue and expenditures of this year to date, now we haven't received probably three of the deployments. Uh reimbursements currently, that's why you'll see this, uh the the numbers kind of being weird here between the revenue and the expenditures. But if you see down here, uh the fire fund is at one sixty-six, two twenty-eight, and then. The approximate amount that we'll bring in for revenue this year, after um half a million dollars is spread out on the all the overhead. It's about a hundred and seventy-eight thousand, so we should land somewhere around three hundred and forty-five thousand. Now, you can see on the right-hand side, these are some of the things that we have accomplished with it this year. Uh the tactical tender was paid off, that was twenty-eight thousand nine seventy-two, that was a seven-year loan at. Um total of two hundred, two hundred and twelve thousand dollars, so that was paid for completely out of the fire fund balance. H T C. Uh C M C uh funded a a trailer this year for ten thousand, and we supplemented it for another three thirty-two hundred roughly. And then the hazmat trailer, we couldn't find one for five thousand, so we supplemented it for four thousand. This is going to be, uh hopefully, the budget this year that we will spend out of the fire fund balance, that's the type three payment of seventy-two eight six five. We have uh H T C. They they put ten thousand away for the intergovernment agreement to help out with a bill out of H T C, the the training center. And I'd like to be able to match that and then ten thousand, because we wanna probably put some infrastructure out there this year. And um you know, after permitting it with Excel, uh we wanna make sure that um we can move forward with that project. And of course, that'll come to you for approval way prior even moving forward this, because it's city property. Uh and then. Supporting the wildland pro- program at nineteen thousand, that's what Bo's asked, my wildland coordinator is. That's his ask for um supporting the program this year, so that we can still, um so we can be successful with that program. Resident reserve program, it was at forty thousand, I reduced it to twenty thousand based on actuals, and then here's the two outfits. For the um. For the enterprise, command one, command two, and that that's just to outfit it. The the actual lease payment is roughly about twenty-five thousand a year, and that's in the operational budget, and that's something that we're probably gonna reduce one of these numbers. And then we wanna wrap the truck for about fifteen thousand, so it's roughly about a hundred and eighty-four thousand out of that three forty-five. Um but this is just temporary, probably one-time annual. Um except for maybe the type three, that might be something that we do year over year, just to be able to. Maybe pay for that piece of equipment that doesn't go back in the operational budget out of the fire fund. Um and I know, I know that that fund's got a lot of strains on it, but uh we're also getting the. Package back from Brian Brown for long-range planning on all of our apparatus, that consultant that we hired, so that we could kind of plan out appropriately. When it pertains to um our apparatus replacement. Next slide, please. This is the county's um side that I presented to them, this is their actual or the request for twenty twenty-four. Uh and this is the city's overall, and that's the total budget. So the increase currently right now is um is for the city, I had it up here. The cities, um, oh boy, it happened here. So the city's overall total increase is one four-three-eight-five-eight. And the county's is three-three-five-six-six-nine. Um, and that is the overall total ask. And that's with everything, insurance increases, um, uh, the salary increases, the, the retirement, et cetera. For that total amount. Uh, next slide, please. And this is for long-range planning. Uh, I just added three percent to these totals for the county each annual year, so. Uh, next slide. And this is just uh, third quarter actuals. For, we're at seventy-five percent um, that has elapsed and we're at sixty-nine point eight percent of the actual year. But this is everything that we built out for the county so far.
There's an extra zero. We did not fill them eight, eight million dollars.
I wasn't sure if it was back.
Oh my gosh. So is it eight hundred thousand?
So these are the grants that are currently being managed, or I, they just fell off my plate. So I just closed out this third of seventy-three thousand for the plan event. Uh, as you can see here with the P P E, ten sets there. And then down here for the house bill, there's five sets, um, and that's a total of like fifty-eight thousand. So that's why we reduced the P P E line item because of these two grants right here. Every year I'll still go for the B F A and that's for T B K radios. And that's roughly the price of those, but that's at a fifty percent match. And actually, I think, uh, next slide. Um, this is our current staffing model. Um, next slide, please. This is for January twenty-twenty-six. And the only addition really to this is an additional engineer that can bump up to acting officer. Or six career firefighters that can bump up the engineer. And this is to do that full staffing model that we've been talking about, about adding an additional engineer to your shift. And that's what this represents right here. The other, I guess there's one other thing, and that's the wildland specialist that uh, I've been talking about for the past. Three years now, I think it is. And that would be, the hopes would be that that would be a sworn person that, that has their full attention to all the wildland and mitigation efforts within all of Lake County, working with R W A, Gincara State Force Service and everybody. Collaborating and collectively, you know, going after grants and funding. And then coordinating all the contractors and the work that needs to be done for um, for our department to have their hands in, all in on that. Um, that's kind of what Tim um, Swanner does for um, uh, Eva River. And he's a part of the management board. It's kind of what his, his role is now. Next slide, please. This is our apparatus. All of the red is what we have um, gotten rid of. Either sold it or give it back to the South Central Region or um, you know, we, it's no longer in our fleet. And then so the, the dark here, um, that is our fleet, that is our current fleet. And then this is the replacement costs and then an approximate replacement date. Some of those we can push out a lot longer if they sit second or third due. Um, but uh, some of them are kind of right on with, with the actual dates that need to be replaced. Apparatus list, all right, next slide, please. I just wanted, this one right here, Mayor, I still need to talk to you about. Next slide, please. Next slide. Next slide. This one right here is the last one I'll talk about. So Bo, in the wildland program itself, he put in for a tactical tender. That, I think that's what he would like for the next priority be, to be in, for community response and for deployment. He put in a uh, a pickup truck for seventy-five thousand, and that's to deploy out on a single resource. So currently, right now, we have Tom from Vale, he retired from Vale. And he has a tremendous amount of certification, and we're sending him out single resource right now. The benefit to that is not only is he attached to our wildland program. So like if we were to ever have an interlock inspired or again, or something like that, I would if we don't. But uh, that he can respond into our community and be able to have, be like a task force leader or, you know, um, uh. He has greater certifications than, than a lot of people. So that's one benefit. The other one is that as we grow that program and do more contract work with these individuals. And we put them out on a single resource, they go out on the fire for fourteen days. When we do the billing for that, the total amount of a fire, we get one percent of that total amount of a fire to be able to put back into revenue. And what will eventually happen, hopefully, is that we'll be able to build that program up big enough to where we'll have seasonals in districts so that when they're not on wildland deployment, they could be burning piles. They could be doing mitigation, they could be doing shipping work, all of that kind of stuff. But you know, that's long-range, long-range planning. And then uh, and then the other one is uh, radios, and I talked about those. So the, the old, the overall ask for, for Bo you saw was about nineteen thousand. And that's the, and this is what that nineteen thousand is for, is for everything that's not highlighted. Next slide, please. Vehicle maintenance, I'll, oh, one more point. So we have an opportunity with an additional engineer and we hire an individual if he can go through our process. And you know, of course, we're an equal opportunity employer, so we, he, he has to, this person, this individual has to make sure that, that, you know, it's the best candidate. But this person has their E D T emergency vehicle technician. We've been wanting to have one of those for the department and internally for many, many years to be able to try to reduce the maintenance costs on our, on our vehicles. That person, the person that has those certifications can do work um, that meets N F P A nineteen oh one criteria. They can work on pumps, they can work on things that um, are required for liability issues, et cetera. So he has that certification. He also has engine boss, which is the person that's in charge of taking a crew out on wildland deployment. And he's had that certification for a few years now, and he's been on deployment with many um, uh, on many deployments. He has a driver operator pumper, uh, currently a captain. And he wants to be a part of our organization. So if we do move forward and he does need the criteria and it's the only person that applies, then okay, great. If there's more, then we'll have to, you know, go through an entire process and um, make sure that we're, you know, being very. Open-minded about all the other candidates, of course, um, and being respectful to the process. Um, so I just wanted to mention that because there's an opportunity to have an E V T. If we move forward with the additional engineer, and that's what some of that increase is also, it's just not um, the other additional increases. It's one additional engineer's position, which is roughly about ninety-seven with benefits and fringe, so. That's all I have. I'm sorry I went over. I talked as fast as I could.
Your department report next week. Are there, are there questions for Chief Taylor?
You already have a grant for the solar ready for station two? Is that something in process still?
In process, yeah. Um, so um, the county is actually hiring somebody that uh, will, that could have that in their job description. Um, this, they'll, uh, they'll look at options for, and I can't remember what Tim Bergman is, Tim Bergman?
He is.
Tim, what was that? Uh, what was that person that you mentioned today? Uh, that the county's hiring that might be able to help out with that? I need to write that down.
Uh, yes, the uh, county uh, has received a grant from the Colorado Energy Office to create a sustainability manager position. So this will focus on um, you know, the lead of the county's climate action plan. Um, but also, you know, overall, big picture county-wise and things that we fund, how we can be more sustainable. And while I'm on, while I'm unmuted, I just, I just want to extend my thanks to Chief Daly and the Fire Management Board for taking a very hard look at a very big budget and making cuts. Um, and knowing and creating the long-range plans for, for a future where we know that our, our local budgets are going to get tighter and tighter.
Mr. Bergman, do the county have any um, significant suggested changes or input to the fire department's presentation today? For you guys?
Um, no, the commissioners did not. Uh, I will say Commissioner Mudge um, was fine with the yellow color of the ladder truck. Uh, no, other than that, the uh, commissioners uh, have been fully briefed on Chief Daly's budget and are happy with it and the progress and the engagement through the Fire Management Board and the reductions that the chief was able to make.
Thank you. Were there questions or comments? Okay. Thank you so much. All right, well, we all know this. Oh, and we've lost Mr. LaChant. So, moving right along, we'll just skip landing. No wonder. Um, I don't know, we'll hear from finance next.
Not, because I saw you in it too, there.
I want the treasure. Sorry.
I didn't know, I didn't know. Yeah.
Yes.
Is this you?
Yes. Um, okay, so we do see an increase in salary um, for twenty-five, which is due to that accountant position, um, plus any proposed fuller and merit that we've been working on. Um, so salary is for finance director, um, the accountant position. And my budget pays for one half of the admin assistant position. Um, so that's where that number comes from. Um, all of the taxes and uh, health insurance, all of those are derived from the percentages that uh, the federal government uses and the health insurance elections um, that have been made. Um, we did see, I don't know if we've discussed this previously, but we did see a seven percent increase in medical insurance, not dental revision. So that is allocated between employer and employee. Um, let's see. I did increase uh, my budget for education and conferences. And I think it's important to um, educate ourselves. Uh, the more we know, the more, you know, we can share um, and build on those processes. Um, so that budget went up from five hundred to twenty-two hundred based on the conferences um, and other trainings that I'm interested in taking, um, as well as room in there for staff. That in turn increased the travel. I don't know who travels for a hundred dollars um, in the twenty-twenty-four budget. Um, so I did increase that. Uh, these are memberships I love the same, nothing too dramatic there. Um, just a couple of organizations that I belong to, uh, very helpful information. Um, they are C G F O A, which is Colorado um, Governmental Finance Officers Association. Uh, G F O A is Governmental Finance Officers Association. So there's Colorado chapter, and then there's the, the big, the granddaddy, I guess you would say. Um, and then we have thirteen thousand in the budget for um, the twenty-twenty-five clear gov. Um, contract that was signed earlier this year. Um, this is the budget software that I'll be using to, for twenty-twenty-four. We will, I will be presenting the budget book using that software. So once we have our final numbers, I'll be importing those and hopefully have a very nice budget book to present to you all and post on my website as well. And that is about it in the treasure, treasures budget. Um, I do have uh, another uh, request. It's not, it does not currently sit in my budget, it sits in the city hall, like budget as those expenses that are for the greater of city hall or just a dumping ground for, we don't have another place to, to dump them. And that is to increase some of the services that we have with um, our current software or accounting uh, with Casell to move to the cloud. Um, so it's, it's easier to access, um, include, uh, to increase the number of licenses. Right now, if we add a license, it's two thousand dollars per license because when you're not hosted, if it's, if we're hostile, it's like fifty dollars a month. Um, so right now, what hap- tends to happen is we have five licenses. Um, and if we are all trying to do things within Casell, um, people can't get in.
Because you're hosted locally and not.
And we only have five licenses. So if P D staff is inputting, um, you know, tickets or whatever and, and Sarah's doing her business license and I'm trying to do financials and permitting is doing their thing. And you know, somebody ultimately will get kicked out, um, or cannot access until somebody else jumps off. So, um, those are, well, this year. Um, the clear gov one, that's already signed, so I don't think we can, we can go back on that because we did sign that earlier for twenty-four. Um, as well as twenty-five, twenty-five, and we'll have greater capacity for the budget season. Um, next year, where department heads will be able to go in and input their budget numbers as a department requested. Um, so, and then those would come to finance and say, Lori, and then we can review so we can have um, a digital budget book that we can share with council, um, and um, the constituents. And, and hopefully get a little more high tech, if you will.
And just a couple, we've made some strategic decisions, just about a lot of the improvements in the efficiency of the finance department. And so the clear gov software is, is very expensive. We decided to go with just the budget book portion of it for twenty-twenty-four and then try and roll it out in twenty-twenty-five to make this process more engaging for the departments, more interactive and easier for everybody, more information, sort of moving away from our, the, uh, I don't want to say clunky, but the process is, making the process more efficient. Uh, the other decision we made was, oh my gosh, you just, we were, we were just talking about, oh, the um, financial management and using Casell. So uh, Casell has been frustrating and it's, it has good aspects and has some aspects that aren't so good. Switching our platform is very expensive, very, very, very expensive. So what we decided, much like sometime the other software we've looked at, rather than to completely switch a platform, like we've made the same decisions in the short-term realm, instead of entirely switching a platform, we're going to try some things with Casell this coming year that hopefully will improve things, like hosting on the cloud. Um, a few other bells and whistles that we're not using that hopefully will make us more efficient. We're going to see how that goes in twenty-twenty-five. If, if we're still having the issue of our finance director wanting to put yourself out the window, we will evaluate. Looking at a different, completely different financial management system. It's just right now, we don't have the bandwidth, it's more expensive. We're willing to give Casell a little bit more time to figure out if it is a good enough of a product for what we need. And so a few of the things we're going to put in, you can see in the budget, are a few expenses for Casell to try and get there. But if we don't get there.
They're, they're not in my budget, they're the city hall budget.
Well, uh, in the budget overall.
Yes, in the overall budget.
In, in the overall budget. But you know, that doesn't mean that we haven't completely abandoned the idea of switching software platforms. If we find that, you know, our finance director is going to pitch herself out the window.
And Cassell was uh recently sold and purchased, so I don't know um what that'll mean for, you know, hopefully we don't see changes or if we see changes, they're, they're great changes and it's not, the transition isn't that either we don't notice it or it's great things that are forthcoming.
It seems like Cassell has been a love hate relationship and we've gone back and forth two or three different times this year.
Well, and, and you know, the interesting thing about Cassell is workplaces before that switched from ADP to Cassell for exactly the same reasons. I mean, a lot of the same functionality and reasons. And so the real question is, is it is such a huge lift to switch a platform like that, that what you're gonna have is, even if it's a better platform, you're gonna have a period of horrible. It's just gonna appear to have. So what we're trying to say is right now with only having our finance director, we don't have the bandwidth to take that on. So we'll, we'll see how it goes. We'll get our finance director the help. She will get that position filled, get her feet better on the ground, and then we'll say, okay, by that time, if Cassell's still not performing in some key ways, we might just need to look at a different platform. And Tyler is a platform she's familiar with, but it's pretty expensive. So again, we said.
The monthly annual cost isn't that much different than going hosted with Cassell. It's, it's pretty, it's the implementation um with any software. Um, and it's extremely expensive.
You can just say what that number is. We talked.
Oh, I don't know. It's like ninety three thousand. It's something ridiculous. So yes, we don't have the, the budget for. I don't have the capacity for. Um, so I'm willing to.
Your clear gov line item, is that purchasing the software? Is that an annual license fee?
That would be um an annual fee.
So that's just a, a thirteen thousand dollar increase starting this year moving forward.
Yes, if we determine that it was something we wanted to keep going.
Right. We're definitely in a giant for twenty five's budget.
Yeah. And so this year we could try the budget book for, I think it was twenty five hundred dollars.
Yeah, all we get is the budget book. We don't get a lot of bells and whistles.
Thirteen thousand is just the budget book or is?
That, yes. And that will allow me to set up users um so that we can do the department requested, the preliminary, um, they, they.
Makes this process that we're doing right now quite a bit more transparent.
Mm-hmm. Yes, for everybody involved.
Earlier and.
Yeah, and, and when we had, I don't even remember, we had Lorraine Trotter come in. She does a lot of financial analysis for a lot of municipalities and she took a look at our finance department, you know, in the transition before Ms. Hule was here. And she said, you know, look, there's still a lot of, a lot of municipalities to these spreadsheets. It's not out of the question. However, there's, there are more sophisticated ways. So that's where we're trying to move to. It's not that spreadsheets aren't workable. It's just there's a better way and we're aiming to get there. Yeah.
Questions for finance?
I thought in our last conversation that you were gonna add a full-time account, but I guess I missed that you were gonna have a full-time accountant and was still have a fifty percent of that.
Yes, and so the admin uh assistant right now does um the accounts payable. Mostly just entering it and voices and cutting the checks. Um, so this person would um help with the bank reconciliations. Uh, those day-to-day operations that Bree doesn't have the uh the learning for or the capacity for. I don't have the capacity to teach her how to be an accountant. Um, so.
So this is a position other than.
Correct. Yeah.
So it is an additional.
It is.
I thought I'd missed it, but we were adding another half position.
No, not another half. Um, the equivalent. Half was approved for the shift, right?
Wait, what?
Account position. With the potential, I guess, to go full-time was what was discussed, right?
Right, for the account position.
Yes.
Yeah, and I think, you know, for um Ms. Ortiz, she came in, the idea was for her to be supporting Just Finance and me. That's not what's happening. She's, she's helping wherever, whenever she needs. And so I think for us to put it, you know, in the budget, that's fine. In reality, she's assisting with a lot of things. She's taken over the newsletter. That's you know, I don't know that that's finance or my department. It is a city. So I think for, for her job.
EV charging rate.
Yeah, she figured out the EV charging rates.
What's that? She helps with the PD with the, the front desk if needed.
So she's truly become an administrative assistant for the administration. Yeah. So what we're trying to do is get Ms. Hule, her actual finance department, the person who can, you know, addition to Ms. Ortiz just doing the checks and AP stuff, so that again, we're not having our finance director just focus on, you know, the, the bank reconciliations payroll.
Understood. Um. Okay.
You have other questions or comments? Anyone else? Then congratulations for being under time. Okay, we've just made back six minutes. All right, Mr. LaChance, let's move on to planning. Also, just, you know, not too far off the topic of Ms. Ortiz, she is Sangre de Cristo baking and has partnered with Rocky Top Toys. And you can sample her delicious goods there.
Evening, Mayor and Council. So there's not a long history of a planning and permit budget as most of you're aware. So it's just the the second iteration of going into this next year. So I have a memo in your pocket and Sarah has that pull up on the screen. Probably first just um talk about a couple of things from this past year in twenty twenty four. Um, you know, planning and permit budget is relatively simple. Um, we only had one line item that exceeded the allocated budget this past year. Um, that was for legal publications by about two hundred fifty dollars. Um, so overall, um, you know, very good with the funds. We were eighty four percent. Uh, we only spent eighty four percent of the budget. Um, so that's about forty five thousand dollars under budget. Um, so all good news there um in terms of last year. Um, a couple of things to note on um staffing and how that affected the budget. So um council authorized the planner one position um for three quarters of the year this past year. Uh, there was not any um benefits or taxes, et cetera, for um I guess when council originally put up, published twenty twenty four budget. Um, so that uh in addition to the plan, planner one position, um was something that was adjusted throughout, throughout, throughout the year. Also, in terms of staffing, the administrative assistant and permit technician position was moved from just a general um administrative department to the planning department. And um that position functions essentially uh three quarters streets um and twenty five percent planning, but that is going forward. That will be uh full-time planning. So that happened in twenty twenty four. Um, that was a, a shift and a re- reallocation and I'll talk about that, how that affects the twenty twenty five budget. Um, but that was not originally in the twenty twenty four budget. Um, so yeah, so there was also not a budget for general insurance for, for uh staff. So that's been updated and going into twenty twenty five, also not have a budget as the planning department kind of created its first budget for uh pretty office expenditures. Um, so we had some minor office expenditures. Um, the big, the big one here is, um, as you're all aware, we passed a resolution um to enter into partnership agreement for the twenty twenty five comprehensive plan. Uh, so that is a forty thousand dollar commitment in total. Uh, that will be ten thousand dollars in twenty, this year, and then uh thirty thousand dollars uh next year. And so that will, is yet to be paid. I'm still waiting for a signed copy of that agreement, but that ten thousand dollars, um, I'll pay that out of code amendment consultant's line items. Uh, so no worries there in terms of covering this year's obligation. Uh, moving on to twenty twenty five, so there is a hundred and forty seven thousand dollars approximately additional requesting. However, let me um clarify a few things there because it's, some of this is not actually that much of a change from what we're already doing. Uh, so as I mentioned, the administrative permit, um sorry, administrative assistant and permit technician position. Uh, that was formerly Lori, Lori, Lori Ty, now Andrew Cummins. Um, that was moved from admin to planning. Um, and reallocated in the planning department budget for the first time. So that's already happening. Uh, so that while that's an increase, the planning department's budget, it's not an increase to the overall city's budget because it's moving from one place to the other. Uh, also planner one position, uh, there will be full-time, uh, they are full-time. And so, as I mentioned, that was originally allocated as only three quarter, as a three, for three quarters of the year in twenty twenty four, so that hiring, starting to hire, uh advertise that position in March. Um, we worked Alex was the best candidate, but ultimately he did not go full-time until September, but he'll be um full-time all next year. So that would be an increase just to the nature of having a full-time employer, uh employed for twelve months. Uh, so again, that is an increase in the budget, but we are already doing that. Uh, there's no, no change. And then for uh for three employees, so including um myself, Andrew and Alex, so the planner one, the permit commission um for all uh taxes, for all benefits, uh budgeted for all three, fully budgeted for all three employees. Um, that's eighty five thousand dollars. So that is the high majority of uh this overall, uh almost a hundred fifty thousand dollar uh proposed increase. Um, so again, no changes from what we're already doing, but it does, it does increase the budget um to accurately reflect what we're doing. And then moving on to the comprehensive plan, so this is really the um, the big uh new item that I'll have to account for in twenty twenty five. So again, that's a thirty thousand dollar commitment for that partnership agreement. Um, the council approved. So I'm proposing to, in order to accommodate that, proposing to pay ten thousand of that from um the line that already exists for code amendment consultants. And then I am decreasing, uh essentially uh wiping out almost all of the historic preservation commission budget. Uh, um slashing the uh city attorney budget for our department and the professional services for engineering. So that would be our consulting civil engineer, our G and associates. I'm bringing that, those numbers down to essentially what we've spent so far this year. Um, so you could call that mostly through the year, at least three quarters of the year. Um, so I know that we can, we can stay within those numbers, but uh we'll have to just be really, really careful and operate very similarly to how we did last, this year or less. Um, so very, very conservative there. So um that uh combination of those four items, those three big decreases between sort of preservation commission, city attorney and um our consulting civil engineer, uh and then using our code amendment budget, that gets me to that thirty thousand dollars um for uh the comprehensive plan. And then again, this is just a one-year expense uh one-year budget item. So in twenty twenty six, uh we're not anticipating any expenses for comprehensive plan. So those things can reset. Uh, in your memo, uh you do have a note on additional software. Uh, we're trying to come up with some creative solutions so we don't actually have to put that into the twenty twenty five budget uh just in terms of that, that contract. Um, so I'm actually, so just disregard um six thou- about six thousand two hundred dollars of that seven thousand dollar software request. Um, the rest of that will essentially be uh renewals for what we are already doing. And let's see here, just wrapping up my summary here in terms of uh trainings, no uh proposed increase. I was able to figure out how to um do trains for all three staff members this, this next year without any increase. In terms of just other minor items, I am asking for a thousand dollars for a computer for the permanent technician. Um, IT is identified as computers in need of an update uh or need to be replaced. And also um the safety, job site safety uh equipment for the three of us. Um, we can share some of this, but we do visit construction sites and currently do not have any um PPE, um personal protection equipment. So um, that pretty much wraps up the summary of the twenty twenty five budget. I could just note a couple of things that I see on the hor- on the horizon that will be important for the department in future years. So identified future needs. Um, the council should be aware that the historic preservation commission has received a um, a large grant, it's a two hundred and something thousand dollars for um uh for the state historical fund grant. And that is for continued work on serving our historic district and identifying our, our historic structures. Um, this is outstanding work by the historic preservation commission. I think at this time, we believe that we can match our, our, our twenty five percent match responsibility with supplemental grant funding. Um, but our obligation next year is forty, about forty five thousand dollars uh in order to match the state historic preservation, the state historical uh grant. But I believe we can cover that with um, with other grant matches. So I wanted to mention that's a really important project, but at this time, it's not, um, it's not asked because we have this, 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 this alternative funding.
Those supplemental grants have already been awarded, that those matching grants, to the best of our knowledge, based on what Lori comes up with.
Yeah, what we don't have is what we, we don't have a great accounting of all that. And we need to get all of that on, on a spreadsheet and that, that just hasn't.
We're, we're assuming that forty five thousand dollars is already accounted for, but we're not a hundred percent sure.
Exactly. Yeah, thank you. And uh would, um, ask that our, our budget, you know, in future years, not ask, but I would note that in future years, our, our uh consultant budget for professional services, so for any kind of code amendments uh for city attorney and for consulting civil engineer, um, that, you know, that will probably need to be reset for a lot of the projects that we have to work on. And also just noting that although it's not a huge cost, um, as, as the city grows, a city engineer would be um as a director of a public works department, would be a valuable, um, a valuable asset to the city, when particularly help re- really planning department time in um and regulating developments such as the rail yard um subdivision improvement agreements, as well as just having an in-house resource for um, for capital projects. Um, especially within the streets right away in infrastructure like storm sewer, et cetera. Um, I'll pause there and take any questions. Thank you.
Do we, yeah, sorry, uh, do we have the number that is more of a transfer rather than an overall increase for the uh one position?
The, uh, for the, the transfer for um, um administrative assistant, permanent technician, it would be approximately fifty five thousand dollars, but uh that's annualized, now hourly rate annualized.
Chip, and my understanding was this year that your engineering budget. That we didn't have enough engineering capability in the budget and you're cutting that budget for next year. How will we accommodate engineering asks in your planning duties?
So, uh, well, it's a good question. We can separate engineering tasks in kind of two categories. One is rail yards and I'm everything that I can to um to pay for that, that engineering time out of the contracts we have with the developer. So anything that's related to enforcement, um, we are accounting for that under their escrow funds. Um, and that is a considerable, it's a considerable amount. Uh, the other category is related to um, just kind of every, every uh like kind of day-to-day operations where someone has a civil engineering question that I'm not qualified to answer. And then, and I'm, but I'm also trying to have them um have a, do a consulting, sorry, a consultant reimbursement agreement. Or if someone is proposing a project that would require civil engineering review, this is outside of the rail yards, um that I have them put down anywhere from a twenty five hundred to uh to a five thousand dollar deposit um in order to, so that we can pay our consulting civil engineer. And anything that's not. Yeah, exactly. Anything that's not covered under that, um, going back to like day-to-day operations where I'm not qualified to answer, but it's essentially um, something kind of critical, time sensitive. I don't have the time to do a consult of reimbursement agreement. That is where um, we're spending, spending those funds. But if you put all that together, um, it's a lot of management. Um, so, and that takes away from, that takes away from planning time. Um, so if you put all those, those pots together, yeah, it, you're getting into the realm of, of justifying a uh, a uh full-time civil engineer on staff, especially when you consider um, things that we're not doing right now, like planning for the future of our, our, our streets and our infrastructure.
Is the, it, uh, cause I'm looking back at the prior year actual from twenty twenty three and the engineering professional services were considerably higher. Is that because we were not splitting out costs amongst various entities and we're absorbing it all or what, what's the difference?
Uh, partially. So yeah, that, that, yes, that is a considerable amount. The other part that's um, that is, may not be mentioned or may not be broken out here is that we, before I was here, we were using our gene associates also for uh for development review. So if our conditional use permit application comes in front of you, then their plan or joy uh would be writing a staff report. So that was a part of that budget. Uh would be writing a staff report. So that was a part of that budget. Some of that should have been covered in consultant reimbursement agreements. Um but there may have been a good amount that was not, or just any other um just planning department zoning inquiries and those sort of things.
Thank you. Are there other questions for for planning?
Well, I have a comment.
Let me make sure this council have any other questions?
So weighted salary proposed for uh the permit technician is um rep- just under seventy two thousand. Yeah.
Okay, yeah.
Is that what you mean by weighted? Yeah, yeah. Go ahead, Steve.
Okay, at one of the other meetings, I brought up an idea that we should have a separate entity for maintaining the roads. Um I had some other thoughts on that. Um the um. This has to be a planning. The uh that would involve the city. The uh Barkville and sanitation district. And I think um. I really don't know this for sure. The Barkville and the sanitation district may be able to contribute a larger portion to this than the city would. But my idea would be that um this would be a a separate entity. Um for most, for the six months during this the summer or or building period, and they would just work on the streets. They wouldn't share equipment with anybody. Um and they wouldn't do patchwork for these two other entities. But they would be doing the whole streets. And that's seems to be a process that has to be ongoing all the time. Not just done, you know, five years and then it's gonna be okay for five years. So um and in the winter, and somehow they would be working with or for the city. Um snow removal. So I have to say.
Thank you.
One last question for Chipman. Uh the IGA between the two planning departments, is there any chance that the county takes on any portion of the city's expenses? For planning and plan review and. What's the status of those two and can we expect any additional costs on the city side? For the planning department with an IGA?
I think I understand the question. So right, so right now, the IGA between city and the county regarding is regarding building department services. Um and there's a. Um essentially the applicant pays for the cost of that and then and the the county keeps twenty five percent of that. That plan review fee and the rest of it goes to a consultant. That's that's strictly for shoot um uh building. Um department services. So um plan review of construction documents. And inspection services. You know, those would be the the um primarily what that covers. Um so the city um our department is not doing any of that. Um we do it kind of all, everything that's a prerequisite to that, um which would be things like. All of your entitlements, like subdivision permits, condition to use permits, certificates of appropriateness, and then we're a sign off on the building permit application. Um and I'm not, you know, at this time, I'm not suggesting any any change to that. The building, Lake County Building Department is making strides to improve. Um uh you know, basically to improve things. They have a plan, I'm checking in with the county on that and they are, they are improving their services to the county.
But no potential increases to the cost for the city uh by utilizing the building department as a stance.
Not, not that I'm aware of. It essentially, I I think that.
No surprises.
Because that is, that is self-funded through permit fees.
Right.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Yes.
Final questions for planning? Thank you. Appreciate it. Um, let me set my timer. Okay, do you want to do community center budget before ARPA discussion or? Since we're talking budgeting?
Oh, uh I think we could probably do the, uh there were in no popular order. I just added them and even we talked about them.
Okay.
At the last meeting. So I think it's probably better to do the um ARPA discussion previous. I think. One of the things I just wanna say on the Kennedy Center is that. I would just wanted to to have the opportunity for you all to pass along questions. And think about your questions. So it's it's on the agenda, so we can discuss it, but it could be a little bit premature because you are gonna hear from two of the potential consultants. At your next regular council meeting. So part of this is an opportunity. If you have particular questions, I can tee them up. For those consultants to be able to answer those. So if you find that this discussion is too premature and you just wanna pass along some questions, that's fine. Or if you really wanna try and talk about uh some of the numbers that were in the budget, we can do that as well. We. Went over uh Ms. Verick's proposed numbers and added some of them to the budget, not like, you know, the whole request. I think we're trimming back. Uh on everybody's requests. So. I think ARPA maybe first, mayor, or?
ARPA is first on our agenda. Um, okay, so I think the reason why we wanted to, hang on. Apply the timer to us too. Um, the reason why we wanted to um go over this is, uh I, you know, I have had a chance to look over the numbers that. That Crystal looked over and they agree, we have about two hundred and thirty eight thousand left in our ARPA funds. Do we talk about?
Well, the.
One of the first ideas for them?
Sure, we can, we can, uh you know, we we've talked about a couple of things to keep in mind. We do not have to spend the money. Uh we don't, we don't have to spend the money yet. What we need to do is commit the funds.
You have to spend it by the end of twenty twenty six.
Correct. So it's also a a user lose, which means we we need to have a commitment and I will double check with our city attorney what that means. But it usually means um receipt of an invoice, uh resolution, committing the money, some some type of evidence that you. You've actually committed the money. So we we tossed around a number of ideas and I think one of the nice things is the number that. Ms. Hewlett and Mayor come up with is a large enough number to accommodate uh multiple things. So. Uh previously, we've committed the money to uh but charitable donations to organizations. So initially, when the money came in. The initial um uh tranches were allocated to nonprofits in town. Those are mostly paid. I think there's one continuing obligation on that. And then, so nonprofit organizations, the treasury regulations changed. So you could do other things with the money. Initially, it was PPE. It was definitely just completely tied to pandemic and COVID. Then we found that we could use the money for employee retention. And when I got here, that was a huge. I think it was a huge push of mine, so we put that, some of the money towards the employee re- um retention uh program. And then obviously economic development is one of the things you can use the money for under treasury regulations. So we are. Um you will see on your next agenda, uh proposed agreement to um with the company that'll help us with economic development. So so those are some of the ideas that have been proposed. I think the the main thing is, is we need to. To settle on what we think we would like to spend that money on and have that commitment this year. And so resolutions passed. Uh I think w- we can discuss those ideas and then make sure that those are allowed by the treasury regulations. Uh and so I think. That's kind of teeing up the discussion with mayor. Was there anything else you wanted me to cover?
Yeah, I just wanted to to make sure that, you know, of that two hundred and thirty eight we had discussed. Dedicating fifty thousand of that to the economic development ideas. Um. That leaves us with um about a hundred and seventy-ish left. Um. There are, there are a number of things that we are allowed to use ARPA for. Um like. As Simonson mentioned, you know, one of those things is um community. Services or like the nonprofits that provide necessary services for people in our community. One of those. Uh specifically listed is in homelessness services. Um and we do. So some, one of the things I would like to consider is we do have a. Uh uh an emergency shelter coming for a CUP later on this year. Um Cisco, who unfortunately is not here to present for this, approached me and and asked about if we had ARPA funds. To contribute um to that. Um that is, uh you know, that is a possibility. I do think it is a very pressing and urgent need in our community. We can also. Use them for premium pay. That's the employee uh retention bonus. Um. Even if we then contributed money to the homelessness shelter to the tune of a of a similar. Fifty thousand, which is what I've in in inquiry of have um found that that would be the request. The leftover money from that is still about a hundred and thirty eight thousand. And we um I had a nice list that I had up earlier that was helpful. We can actually dedicate um some money to investing in in um road infrastructure. Believe it or not, we would just have to spend it by the end of twenty twenty six. And I do have questions if we. Would be able to to do that um or follow through with that expenditure. Um. We can use it for um, sorry. I have my nice list up and now it's gone.
Control shift T opens up those tabs.
Hmm, it's a good trick. Well, I used the same search and it brought up a different window, which I.
Can't help you there.
I know. Yeah, I just should have left it up. Um. I guess my, the reason why I wanted to have this discussion is I wanna hear, you know, this would be something, this would, this would be resolution driven by council. So of, you know, if there's anything else that has crossed your um your minds where we could direct this. I do not wanna leave money sitting on the table unused or undedicated.
There are, I had a long meeting with Michael Irwin, the road and bridge director this week, and. The county has two hot plants that will be up and running in the county this next year for twenty twenty five. Hot plants, meaning they can make asphalt. It doesn't require us a two hour drive back and forth to BD. If we really can utilize some of that money for road maintenance, it, we have the potential, number one, to get it done locally. Uh by sharing resources, it would require contributing driver time. Um but having it done locally, so we can get those materials at probably fifty percent of market rate. So instead of a hundred thousand dollars to paper block, we could actually get it done for fifty thousand dollars because it can be made locally. That'll be C dot. Using the Hattling gravel pit, setting up their own hot plant. They've already agreed to make as much asphalt as the county and the city can use. And uh County Road Bridge is gonna set up their own hot plant again on their gravel pit out toward the airport. So there's a real good potential that we could. Save some money and and have the opportunity to. Uh work with the county on that. If we wanna do that this next year, I would certainly be in favor of funds going that direction.
Um, one of the things we could also consider, I am in the process and working with Beth Lenz to. Write for a grant specifically, you know, my first thought was for stormwater drainage planning. Um there are two types of grants you can apply for as a planning grant and then a and then a capital. Construction grant, you know, the the money to actually do stuff. Um if. We diverted some of this money to to planning, it might be. Reasonable to divert the grant request to capital acquisition. Um. These are grants that are available under the infrastructure and um. Uh uh now I lose the, the name of that whole bill that passed. And I think it is quite highly possible that that money will go away in the coming years. And so I feel really.
This is. Specifically for. The planning and the engineering and the implementation of.
This, so this grant um.
But this is separate from our deposits.
Separate from our funds. But I'm wondering if we could be more wisely direct the grant request to capital. If we used our funds for planning. Is that, is that an allowable expense under the ARPA funds? So, yeah, so ARPA is um is uh.
Because we are stretching the.
Stormwater projects.
We are asking so much of the planning department and you're stretching us. So then already it would be nice to.
Yeah, recipients may use these, well now they're called, I don't even know how to pronounce it, the slop of funds. To invest in necessary improvements to their water and sewer infrastructures, including projects that address the impact. Impacts of climate change. Um and that's kind of how I'm building this grant around is based on our increased. Um anticipation of large rainfall, the we, I did just get the map of kind of where our flooding, what our floodplain. Map is and uh a lot of it does match where we saw considerable damage from the last. So I think we could.
Yeah, and how do you, how much do you anticipate would be for that? I guess.
I mean, to some extent, it depends on uh on how extensive you want the planning to be. I think like for a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. We would have to scale it down and not say like, oh, let there, you know, but like these, these really dicey little areas like.
So the ARPA funds would be for engineering for the planning department. And then the grant funds would be for actually im- im- implementing this, these engineered plants.
That is a thought that crossed my mind today when I, when we were.
Do we have any ideas for Chipman, how much it would, how much in our funds would make a thing in those engineering costs? Is is that a?
Again, I think it depends on the scale of the planning.
And we'd still be having, we'd still be having to use consulting engineers to do it, of course.
Correct. So my thought in scaled down is I would focus on our problem areas. Which are kind of the ditches that that drain down the west end of town, east twelfth and across. Um where we, where the manhole likes to rise into the air. Yes.
That would, that would really be nice to see. The ARPA funds for engineering to our planning department and then a grant specifically to implement.
This all, you know.
What I'm looking at right now is fifty K for the economic potential presentation soon. Fifty K for the potential for homelessness. Um and then we already had about one hundred seventy K. From, I think that was from the economic uh development. So we're sitting at one, about one twenty K, a little bit more. Um that we can use for a hundred and thirty eight, sorry, thank you. Um that we can use for employee retention, this planning plan and. Or road maintenance. So I feel like if we were go planning and stretch our dollars way more than purely throwing it into road maintenance.
Um, what do you think that?
Well, I mean, it, we're able to use, we're able to get more off of the grant if we're able to plan for it. Uh not to say that we aren't gonna get something out of the road maintenance, um obviously, especially with two uh. Asphalt areas to get access from. Obviously, it's gonna be cheaper as you explained, but purely from if we're going to be bringing in money from outside of the community. From an efficiency standpoint, makes sense, the planning from taking the planning approach rather than. Taking the, let's tackle it head on. Um cause I'm imagining there's gonna be some road maintenance requirements. For some of these uh drainage issues anyways. Um.
And Grantora may look more favorably upon a community that has a plan.
And and if we have a plan for the drainage and all that, that could potentially help us with um. Saving money overall in the future. Um but, you know, not to take away from the point of we could still use these funds for. Uh the asphalt. So that's like five different plans that we can use the remaining hundred and thirty eight K, assuming. That we save the fifty K for the economic development. To me, that's enough. New ideas, unless there's another president one, kind of discussed based off that, it feels.
So this money has to be s- has to be spent by the end of twenty twenty six, so twenty one, twenty five months away.
But it has to be.
But it has to be committed by, by this.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I, I, I guess my initial.
Because we're talking about spending the vast majority of it in twenty twenty five, of course.
Pretty quickly, yeah.
Not saving anything for twenty twenty. Not saving anything for twenty twenty six. Almost all of the budget requests followed the different departments are asking for cost of living raises and then bumps on top of cost of living raises. How important, and and this is a legitimate honest question for the mayor and the city administrator, how important are these? ARPA employee retention bonuses, since we are across the board raising wages.
So, a lot of municipalities have longevity pay in addition to, you know, cost of living increases in there. So it's not unusual, the feedback I've heard has been very good. Uh, I think it's definitely helped in the sense, if you look at what we've spent, I think. If you look in uh verify those numbers, we have. In addition to the amount going up, we've paid out, I think, a little bit more because I think it has uh worked to some extent for employee retention. I don't think it's worked perfectly, but I will always wanted to say. If we have a choice, we wanted to invest in our people and so if we have competing interests and we can. As I'm listening to discussion, it seems like it's a lot to fit in. You know, we've let employees know that this is, uh, it has been ARPA announced slurp money. That it it might end at some point and I I think.
Will it, it ends no later than twenty twenty six, I assume, yes.
The employee retention, well.
Only the grant funding for the employer retention bonuses in twenty twenty six.
So it doesn't come out of our budget until twenty twenty six if we were to continue providing. Right.
What is the cost of the employee? That's something, we we talk about devoting our funds to the employee retention. Bonuses, what is the cost of the employee retention bonuses for the city, do we know?
Per, per year?
Yes.
So it's.
Historically, what has it been, what was the issue?
Okay, so it's been in place for three years and I think we just covered it this morning, was it about? I'm gonna pull numbers out, eighty six thousand dollars the first year. And then the next year it went up to a hundred and thirty, thirty, am I pulling these numbers out of my head?
I'm, I'm gonna.
So all of these other asks are on top of this hundred and thirty eight thousand dollars for twenty twenty five? In employee retention bonus?
No. Well, you, you have room for multiple, so the ones you discussed were economic development. Uh, emergency shelter. And then I think if you went employer attention, it it might be, that might be it, so you'd have to make a decision then, or what do you wanna do?
Yeah, I guess that was my point, so employee retention, we can assume hundred forty?
Okay, so. Are you asking for historically or what we have? We, we spent a hundred and twenty.
Yeah, the last year was a hundred and three.
This year, sorry, I don't know which year I'm working.
So what are we, so what are we in, cuz it changes, all of our, all of our rest don't add up anymore, we have two hundred and thirty eight total. Employee retention bonuses for twenty twenty five are approximately.
Uh, so the numbers I have.
We have a hundred and thirty, if we did these other two. Destinations for ARPA funds, we have a hundred and thirty eight thousand remaining, the question is. How would you like to direct that?
Joey, that's your question. Yeah, and I have uh year one eighty six K, year two uh about a hundred and three K and year three, so far, we've spent about a hundred K. Um, for the.
We live a little north of a hundred thousand.
Now, remember, it's not, the other issue too is you can use, so let's say you wanted to. You wanted to maximize your money, you still wanted to put some money towards the planning and the the roads and infrastructure.
Right.
You can say of the money that's available, we're gonna put a hundred K of our, our stimulus money towards. Player retention. If it's more than that, we'll fund it to the general fund, the city's general fund, if that makes sense. So you could, you could limit the amount you draw down from the ARPA funds and just say.
I understand, I was just trying to balance all of the asks and I hadn't. I hadn't heard the number for what the retention bonuses were for.
Do not have to fit all of the asks in.
Well, but, but, but. But I'm trying to keep on the top of mind, so employee retention bonus at a hundred, it's, it's. Homeless shelter at fifty, it's strategic partners at fifty for economic development. It's potentially a planning consultant for. Let's say fifty and a missing one, what was the, what was the road? And then potentially road maintenance. So we caught all of those to twenty five thousand dollars, what do we, what um, what do we do?
I don't, I think we can start with the easy ones. Uh, if we were to break it down, and I think the two most concrete asks are the fifty Ks. From uh the economic development and homelessness. To me. The value of both of these is intensely high to the point where they make it kind of hard to justify putting anything else over it. We're cutting into that budget.
You're talking about the economic development and the homeless shelter.
That's right, so the hundred K for that, and that's of the two hundred and thirty eight K. Right, so in my mind, if I were to split this up personally, that'd leave us with a hundred and thirty eight K to spend. Sorry, between um, the other three, planning, employee and um road.
When will we get a presentation on this homeless shelter ask? When, when will we actually be able to flesh that out and see that?
CUP, lawn planning and zoning.
So we have December sixteenth or something.
Twenty first.
Yeah.
Thank you.
So we have. We're in front of planning and zoning on the seventeenth and twenty first in front of city council. And I just, I just wanna acknowledge that I have a conflict of interest here cuz the homeless shelter is. The advocates project, but um, this money is actually do or die for the homeless shelter to get off the ground. We have grant funds um allocated towards it, but they tie our hands on. Um, some of the startup costs in terms of um, the investment that's gonna need to be made into the space to get it. Uh, ready for the, for the CUP.
And so we have to commit the ARPA funds before we actually get to see the presentation, which is gonna be difficult.
When's our final budget?
I'm happy to present at any point.
December third.
December third, so it's early, early December.
Enjoy if you'd like, I'm part of the.
I just, I just don't know much about it.
Yeah, and I'm happy to have a discussion and see if that'd be helpful, I'm part of the task force that works on that and. Feel like I know enough about the project to be able to help out, kinda describe some of them.
Technically.
I personally like the idea of spending our funding on the priorities that we identified in our strategic planning process. Which to me would raise um, economic development, infrastructure to the top of the pile.
We also have housing. Yeah, on our strategic, I mean, it really, any of these things we've discussed.
Employee retention has been part of the efforts since I've been on um, for three years, so.
Well, it, it seems like all of our budget asks are are trying to prioritize.
Yeah.
Employee retention from a, from a basic budget standpoint, we're, we're not, we're not asking anybody to cut their wages back, everybody is getting a.
Right, and and.
At minimum, what cost of living raise this year?
And and the, I guess the, I I fully in agreement with you, I guess the caveat to that is. Even during those years, we did that as well, on top of having this. Uh, we've heavily increased the budgets and salaries of most employees by a substantial amount. Um, even after we also did this employee retention bonus, a large reason for that was just because. At the time, even with the increases in wages, we were not seeing the retention that we needed. Um, now, to what extent is that going to continue to allow people to want the job? Good question, I think given the circumstances nationally, um, and maybe depending on how our economy goes. It's a serious question to contemplate um, it one way or another, whether it's for better or worse. Uh, in terms of employee retention, but I. I guess my, my one concern about it is long term sustainability and. Um, I know that we had already mentioned to the employees that this is gonna end at some point, our funds are. And that was certainly part of the discussions back three years ago when we first made this decision. And at, when is that point and how much of a drop off? It's an immediate drop off, are we gonna do a light drop off, where we paid less than we would normally do? Right now, if we were to not fund, it's an immediate drop off. Um, so. Even if we were to say we only take one year and split it in half, so that's about a hundred and five ish. Assuming it goes up a bit. Plus the fifty K for homelessness, plus the fifty K for economic development. That puts us at like a little bit or under thirty something that we have remaining to split between. Road or planning for maintenance.
And I would like to point out, like, this is a discussion, we are not to make any decisions, this is a work session, so. Um, you know, if, 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 if we hammered out some options, we could. You know, decide at our regular council meeting.
And the streets department did make an ask. To increase their. Road maintenance budget.
About a hundred K.
No, by three hundred and.
Well, let's wait, let's back up with that.
They, they.
Let's back up, that wasn't necessarily the streets for us, so that was. Feedback that we took about, at some point we need, so I'm not gonna say that was our streets or our manager, that was a collective city. Decision to say if we're gonna.
Attack that was, I think that was obvious, but we did, we did present it out there at five hundred thousand dollars.
Street, yeah, three hundred K for total street maintenance and four hundred and sixty four K for the total budget.
I'm just gonna tell you, we have a huge deficit and this morning that got cut. And and that got cut based upon the discussion that happened the last council meeting, which was perhaps we should have a plan. So going forward in your budget, what you're gonna see is there's just enough money for what we did this year, which is about a hundred and thirty K. And then um money for a consultant to put together a plan. Because frankly, you know, you saw the numbers that came out, we were just such, had such a huge deficit, we can't, we just can't do that this year. So if you, we wanna. You know, stay the course, we can stay the course with what money we put towards, you know, just what can we do and. And then put together a plan.
And, well, and my whole point with that conversation was then the ARPA funds going toward road maintenance or toward. Engineering fees for planning and zoning are very much.
They help us in.
It's a worthwhile ask.
Yes.
And and I think we would, we, we would not be listening if we didn't take into consideration some of the things we've heard with. A number of the things we've gotten feedback on, so the gentleman strategy, some of the other things, infrastructure. Um, but I also think, you know, some of the things that scored high in that are things that end up in our strategic plan as well. So it, they're always gonna be tough asks, I think, the question really is how do you leverage it? Because your, your ARPA money can only be used for certain categories, can we decide to use money, can we leverage that and then use that money? For something and then leverage general fund money as well, you know. For sure, so if we wanted to continue an employee retention program. You're not limited to using.
Right, right.
We can decide to continue that.
It would just be under the budget, the official budget.
And but remembering that, you know, our money can't be used for everything, so if you can use it for something and you wanna put it towards that, put it towards that, cuz we need to commit. This year and do it and spend it in two years.
We're gonna need ARPA funding to help us balance the budget this year.
Well, we sort of talked about that, uh, I think, uh.
Even with all of the ARPA funding, we can't balance the budget this year.
Well, we're, we're getting, we made some substantial progress this morning.
I would love to see.
The general. So, uh, I think you know, we started out with pretty large deficit. We spent about half the day on it and. So when, yes, when multiple people. Um, we spent about half the day on it and we are a lot better off, so we still have a deficit. Of three hundred sixty one thousand dollars.
Does that include the ARPA funds or does that not include the ARPA funds?
What do you mean?
Her, her question was, are we trying to use our place to balance the budget in order to make sure that that. That three hundred and thirty one thousand dollar deficit that we still have, doesn't include spending any of our.
And 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 we get, we get it sort of into dicey territory using ARPA to offset the budget deficit because we can't use it for operating expenses. We, you know, like that's sort of.
Yeah, I was just making sure we weren't including any of that.
Okay.
Those are separate over and above.
Correct.
Thank you.
Yeah, so we've, we've gone over a, a lot of things and made it some hard decisions, I think, again, we keep saying, you know, presenting these numbers, it's not. Uh, final yet. You know, are we gonna get to a budget where we don't, I've said this before, where we don't. Need to transfer from general fund, which has happened in past years.
Well, in this last year, we, what was it, two hundred thousand that we?
No, let's, my mixed apples and oranges, last year's budget was a balanced budget.
Right.
Last year's budget was a balanced budget, there was no line item transferring for general fund to balance the budget. Your auditor came, wait, so your auditor came and said, in the end. You had a hundred thousand dollars you transferred from your general fund, so about, about equal. But the budget did not.
The budget, the budget was, but we did spend a little bit more money, we did take a little bit of money.
Yeah.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Exactly, exactly, yes.
And and I'm sorry, I thought I remembered it being two hundred, maybe it was only one.
The overall expenditure is one hundred, um, thank you, over from the general fund, that's what I've known from the auditor as well.
Yeah, and that's, you know, I think that's.
That's pretty close to even, and it's not, but I'm not arguing that.
Right, but, but I guess what I'm saying is we didn't have to, so we do have a line in our budget that says transfer from general fund. To get it to say zero from the get go, if we finish in the end and I owe another time. Um, we actually. I remember, what year was it, it was not last year or the year before, where we just put an extra eighty seven thousand dollars into contingency. Because we were actually had more money in the end, we're like. Because again, with DOLA, you don't actually get a star or any credit if you spend less. You just have to file supplemental budget if you go over, so the answer was. It's a kind of a user losing your budget and our revenue indicated we're gonna have eighty seven thousand dollars more. Than we had put in the budget, and so we put it in, I think we put.
Yeah, I, I mean, yeah, I can already see some cuts made from already previous presentations, so streets, for example, is. Not four hundred and something, it's about a hundred ish, so I. It's important to keep in mind as we do consider these things, I guess back to the ARPA discussion and the overall thought process of it. I like the idea of having multiple ideas for this that we can kind of. Analyze and talk more in depth about in a regular meeting, uh, hopefully with um all of us present. And hopefully in person, so we can fully discuss kind of what we would like to see for those funds, cuz I think we got. We got a good list of things that we can use it for, um, and it'd be important for us to really. Fully have that conversation with each other during that actual decision making. Time.
Interesting. Interesting ideas. For all of these different things to spend ARPA funds on, any direction from the mayor or from the city administrator on. What we should be considering priorities in these four or five different points that floated.
I know when we talked today, we had different priorities.
Well, I did not know about the homelessness idea until this morning. So I did not know that that was on the list and I would, we can, I certainly think you need to have a lot more information about that. I would say I met with John Trulch this morning with our strategic planning process. And more than anything, I just want us to stick to our strategic planning process. It seems like all these ideas could fit into that, but I, I do think. We tend to go astray sometimes with ideas that are, this is a good idea and that's a good idea. We should stick, we've, we've chosen a process, we should stick to it. Which means, you know, if we're looking at economic development, I think that's a good, good one, that checks the strategic planning box, I think. Uh, infrastructure, we've heard that loud and clear. And so, and then I also think addressing the, the issue of housing in our community, so. I, I think those are.
I, I will say that there are some percentage limitations of the overall ARPA award. That can be used for infrastructure and road surface type of things.
Do we have any idea what those numbers are?
I'm going to make, I just did a rough calculation, so around two hundred thousand dollars would be. What we would be limited to, um.
But we're, well. So we haven't used. Any, any of that we. Any amount we. Would be well within read, well within those limitations.
And I, you know, like, that is a rough figure, so I don't want us to think like, oh, can just use the rest of it, like, I really need to clarify.
And are we sure that we haven't used any money that would qualify us under that so far?
Good question.
Cause I feel like we haven't, but. I mean, for infrastructure period, like, would they consider, for example, what we did over. At the rail yard potential infrastructure if. Structure at some point for projects.
For our, our family?
Yeah.
Yeah. Everything that's on that list.
We had talked at one point.
Right. That's what I.
That's what you're remembering, so, uh, we had talked about. From the time I got here, using what we thought was left, which was about two hundred thousand, it's now two hundred thirty eight. We had talked about purchasing a parcel.
For many reasons, didn't pay it, yeah. Okay, I remember that, thank you, sorry. I just, I, I wasn't a hundred percent sure of that. Those missed memory or not.
Could any of those ARPA funds be used for our current and ongoing affordable housing initiatives?
Yeah, I mean, that's one of the biggest things you can use it for, you can use it to acquire, you can use it to. Um, buy land, you can use. Renovation of buildings you purchase.
Well, I was just thinking about our two developments that we have here in town that are. Ready to break ground.
The two county projects. I, I feel like that one is. I mean, I'm sure they wouldn't be upset if we decided to, but like, that's been figured out. Budget-wise.
I do wanna, you know, we are pretty well over time at, at this point, and I know these are really valid things to sort of cogitate. Would you guys be comfortable just taking those ideas and thinking about it more and then bringing. A, a broader or a more specific, not broader, more, please not broader, more specific discussion to council.
To get some information on some of these other things, so yeah.
So I think. Uh, I'm looking at your agendas, so your next regular council meeting is terrible. It's full and we're not talking about budget items, so there's that, it's full, period, at the end. Uh, your next, it's just, uh. Your next work session is on November twenty sixth. That is going to be another long one, because we have, where we have been putting just lots of things in the administration budget, so. Lots of catch-all, give your police department a budget, and then we had really what needed to happen was a discussion regarding the balance budget. So that meeting, you really need to come up with your balance budget. So if we wanna add the discussion of ARPA funds to that, we can add it, it's just. Be aware, it's probably gonna be not a two-hour work session, it might be closer to, two and a half.
And that'll be our very last meeting before budget on December third.
Correct, because what we want to present to you. What we wanna present to you on the third is the resolution with balanced budget for you to pass. It's. The only other way, and I don't even wanna throw this out there, but I will, the only other way to do it is. If after your meeting on December third, if you do not have a balanced budget, you're gonna have to have a special meeting. It's not.
December third it is, yeah.
So, I, I, you know, and we knew this going in, we, we talked about the longer meetings, but so what we will do is add to eleven twenty six and then. I don't know that we have time to put together like packets materials. But a presentation, I think, from the, the homelessness.
That would be critical.
Do you need more information on the other?
Maybe a slightly more fleshed out idea of what grant money would be available for infrastructure if we were able to designate some money for a consultant.
The return on.
What are, what are the actual chances of getting that grant? Is, is this many that, I mean, I think just getting the engineering plan is worth its weight in gold.
Small.
But if we could actually implement it too, that would be a real home loan.
And that isn't the only, you know, that isn't. You know, like.
No, but that one's, that one's.
If we failed, we could apply again. There are also additional grants that apply specifically to road surfacing and things like that, that we.
And those engineering plans don't have an expiration date, so we get those. Using the ARPA funds and those are available for us to act on as we can, when we can.
I'd love to have a rough idea of how much these engineering plans would cost, we tossed out fifty K, I don't know.
A sort of a, a rough figure before our next.
Fifty thousand probably is, is only covering two or three trouble spots, to be perfectly honest. It's not much.
Right, that's what I'm wondering.
But it's a whole lot more than we have right now.
Yes, right.
And if we had the consulting plans available, maybe it makes it much easier for you to get that grant. To actually implement it, which is something you've been talking about.
All right. Well, do you wanna do something on the community center? I think like Ms. Simonson. Oh, Mr. Bergman.
Thank you, Madam Mayor, um, just reminding everyone gently um on the animal shelter. If I know it's going to be a long day on the twenty sixth, just like today. Um, just throwing that out there.
Um, Mr. Bergman, what would you think about? The animal shelter manager, myself, and maybe Ms. Simonson coming to your, one of the county commissioner meetings to go over. Like having us come to you, instead of you meeting us at O Dark thirty.
More than happy to accommodate.
Thank you, sir. I will be in touch. Um, like Ms. Simonson mentioned, um, the, uh. You know, we got a big presentation on the community center in our last meeting, we're gonna be hearing from the potential. Consultants at our next meeting, so. Is there anything we would further like to discuss or review about the community center at this time?
And the other issue too is if you have any burning questions about the budget, if you would like me to pass along or. Anything that you would like me to pass along to those consultants to cover in their presentations based upon the information you received from Ms. Barrett. At the last. Presentation.
Ms. Barrett had an extremely pragmatic approach to her presentation, it would sure be nice to carry that across to the consultants, which. Those two things typically don't go together, but if you could communicate that, that we really do need a real world. Review that would, that would.
Here's my tip, we're gonna get two very different approaches to the. Neither, I think, is better than the other, but two very different approaches, so I think it'd be interesting, and I, I will carry that message along.
I, I can't tell you, I. I, I was, I was very impressed with her approach. Being very realistic, that was very helpful, um. Secondly, and it's not a budgeting request, it's just a general request of, of. The city administrator and, and the mayor, Kim City Council. Review expenses for the community center before those monies are expended in the future. We had several different expenses this year. Um, that. I in particular found out after the fact, it would sure be nice to have a heads up, all right, we're about to. Commit this work and, and have some review, I know it falls underneath. A lot of times the costs fall underneath what's required, but.
That's correct.
It, it, for me personally, it would be critical to be able to see those expenses before they're expended. To keep me positive on the project, surprises are, are not making me very. Ongoing project.
Absolutely, i- it's oftentimes also like the Tabor Opera House, where we have something that we have the opportunity to do. Right now, and it falls within, for the Tabor Opera House, within their DOLA, in this case, it fell within the money that was budgeted. That we weren't gonna spend, and so when we had the opportunity to get the roof repaired done, or we had the opportunity to get some testing done. Uh, but yes, absolutely, we can give you a heads up on those before. And I, I try and cover as much of that in my city administrator.
You do, they just tend to come after the fact, and it would be nice to, to know, okay, we're about to spend this money rather than, oh, we just spent this.
So you're also getting those. Monthly reports too, so if you have the opportunity, those, a lot of that stuff was teed up in the reports that we were. Trying to focus on the roof repair, we're trying to focus on getting some testing.
And we, you know, we're, we're like, for example, the roof repair was not gonna cost near as much as it was, so a lot of the money did come from that, I know that wasn't captured in the. Presentation, but a lot of the current expenditures were not expenditures nearly over budget, they were.
I'm not worried about it being over budget, I'm not even worried about it being above your threshold.
Yeah.
I'd just like to know about him in advance.
I've made the same request for multitude of other things, so I agree.
The same ahead of information for other departments for their budgeted items, I'm just. I mean, my point is that it's a very slippery slope.
I'm, I'm being very specific about a, a project that is. That is a future project, not an ongoing business like the Tabor Opera House or anything like that, this, to me, is a different qualification.
I guess, for, from my perspective, I don't wanna micromanage city spending on a project. Except that in the case of the community center, I don't think we have a solid plan.
Thank you, that's.
I don't think we know.
Needs an emergency repair by all means, that's. That's a different quantity than a planned future community center, that we don't have a firm plan for yet. Um, so I think it should fall under a different threshold.
Well, and I think that is the whole point of Ms. Barrett's presentation, was to say how we've gotten from where we are and what the plan is. And what the next step in the plan is.
Which is our consultant's next week, sure. Absolutely.
Right.
It's gonna be great. It is. Eight forty-two. Does anyone have any last thoughts, requests, comments? It's okay, Joey. I'll give you the floor whenever you want.
One, one request, coming into budget season, it would sure be nice to have everybody who has any possibility to be here in person. It really does, um, to have people sitting at the table. Um, if you can make it, please by all means, come to person.
Now it is eight forty-three. Do a motion to adjourn.
Do you need a motion?
No, I just. Wanna make sure there's buy-in on that, eight forty-three, this, this city council work session is adjourned, thank you all so much for attending, thank you.